Good evening, I'd like to reconvene the City Council, success agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now, 7:25 PM, Wednesday, April 27, 2022. Salute to, roll call please.
Thank you Mayor, Mayor Ta.
Yeah?
Vice Mayor Monzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Do.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flag will be Mayor Ta and invocation will be Councilmember Nguyen. So please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice called.
Please bow your head for invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we meet tonight to conduct our business, City Government, help us keep in mind that we are here to serve the people of Westminster and enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all of the citizens we represent. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. Next, we have City Attorney Close, second report.
Yes, there was, first of all, I want to report briefly on the first item, which was existing litigation, the case of Arcadia versus Southern California Edison. We had a discussion in the council, voted by Councilmember Do, seconded by Monzo, on a 5-0 vote to participate with other cities in that same case in a motion seeking attorney's fees and penalties against Edison in that situation, where we prevailed in getting Edison to calculate something correctly, which had been calculated incorrectly. Secondly, there are three other potential litigation cases, there was discussion on those, and the council provided direction and nothing further to report.
Thank you so much for your report. Next, we have expert communication, I see none. The City Club, report please.
Thank you Mayor, and welcome to the council, the mayor, and everyone here. I'd like to make a quick announcement that we still have vacancies on some of our commissions and committees, so please visit our website. If you know anyone, please encourage them to visit the website and submit an application for any of the openings. Also, staff would like to request to pull consent calendar agenda item 3.3 to be discussed separately after the consent calendar has been discussed and action has been taken. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much for that. So should we have the motion now?
During consent, we just wanted to let you know.
Alright.
No, we can pull it at the time.
Alright, so we weigh into the consent, alright. So I believe the next item will be City Manager Report.
Yes, thank you Mayor, members of the City Council, everyone watching at home and in the chambers. Just a few things to announce. First off, this Saturday, which would be April 30th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM over at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park, the city will be hosting its annual Black April event. If you may remember back in 2019, the city recognized Black April as an official event. And so the last couple of years, we've had virtual events, we are actually having an in-person event this Saturday. So we hope to see you out there. It is a free event, and it pays remembrance to the fall of Saigon in 1975. We also have an event on May 3rd at 11:30 AM, and that's on Tuesday over at Park West Park, which will be now called Tony Lamb Park. We're actually having a Tony Lamb Park dedication ceremony that day. We'll be unveiling the new park sign, and we will hear from local community leaders, as well as Mr. Lamb himself. So again, that is taking place this Tuesday at 11:30 AM. The Senior Center is hosting a Mother's Day luncheon that's going to take place on May 9th at noon. Senior Center activities and functions are relatively fun, to say the very least. So if you know of any seniors who would like to partake in these senior activities, make sure they contact our Community Services Recreation Department. And then Blessed Sacrament Church is hosting their annual parish festival. It's back after two years, it's a community event that many in our community are very familiar with. And so that's a festival that begins May 12th through the 15th. And then of course, today is Administrative Professionals Day, so we just want to shout out to all of our administrative professionals out there who basically serve, you know, as the foundation for everything that we all do up here. So thank you to all of our administrator professionals. And last not least, I'd like to introduce Officer Jared Montgomery, who is with us today. And he was awarded the Orange County Auto Theft Advisory Commission Award for recovering 35 stolen vehicles in 2021, and that totals to about $461,492. Six of those vehicles were occupied by suspects, and he was one of the top three recipients in our county. So at this time, I'd like to invite the mayor to come down as well, who will be presenting him with a special award. Chief has a few words.
In Orange County last year. Thank you.
Good job, Officer Montgomery, thank you very much.
And with that, that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager. And next item, we have a few special presentation. The first one will be proclamation for DMV Donate Life Month. So may I invite Mr. McDonald to come up to receive proclamation for DMV Donate Life Month, and I'd like to invite all the members of City Council to join me to present a proclamation. Proclamation, DMV Donate Life Month, April 2022, whereas the mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster wish to join the California Department of Motor Vehicle, DMV, and One Legacy in celebrating Donate Life Month by sharing information and encouraging the community to sign up and save life. And whereas Organ, Eye, Tissue, Marrow, and Blood Donation Act recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need, and anyone can donate regardless of age or medical condition. Whereas more than 100,000 individual nationwide, and more than 20,000 Californian are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual donation of a heart, lung, liver, kidney, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the life of more than 75 others, and organ donor saved more than 40,000 lives last year, most ever. Whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in emergency. Whereas California resident can sign up with Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. And whereas California resident can sign up to be an organ eye and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver license or ID card at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California resident interested in saving a life, two living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, I, three times, Mayor of City of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo and Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Nguyen, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as DMV Donate Life Month in the City of Westminster, encouraging all community members to check yes online or when applying for or renewing driver license or ID card at the Department of Motor Vehicle, DMV, and spreading the word to help save lives. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's my honor to accept this proclamation and on behalf of Donate Life, One Legacy. And as a longtime, 37-year resident of Westminster, this cause is very close to my heart. I'm actually a recipient of a heart and lung transplant four years ago, and without that, I wouldn't be alive today, would have not seen my most recent grandchild be born. I would have left my wife a widow, my children fatherless. The fact that the City of Westminster has acknowledged and proclaimed this Donate Life Month, it's quite important to us to spread the word, and I am so proud of my own city for doing such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, so. And I'm not really sure that you are aware that I participate in your event every year for the last, I think, 15 years. Alright, so, thank you.
Thank you, so. Thank you. Congratulations. Oh, you're still with us. Oh, thank you very much, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
All members of the City Council, so please come back, we have another two presentation. Alright, thank you. So I'd like to invite, I think Gina Nunez from Westminster Family Resource Center to come up, please. Alright. So we have another proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2022, whereas Westminster Mayor and City Council join the Family Resource Center in bringing awareness to Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas one of the many amazing resources provided by the city is a family resource center, which provide resources and services to family to help keep children safe, healthy, and thriving by prevention and intervention of child abuse. And whereas child abuse and neglect impact children and families regardless of their socioeconomic status, race, culture, religion, ethnicity, educational level, sex, or where they live. And whereas in 2021, there were 32,676 calls in Orange County to the Child Abuse Registry for undupicated children, and 840 of these children residing in Westminster. Whereas 90 children died in California in 2021, and eight children died from child abuse or neglect in Orange County. And whereas the City Council recognized important working together and supporting each other to help children and families by providing resources, education, and support during challenge and struggle have to do with incident of child abuse. And whereas April is Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout the nation, we're asking each resident of the City of Westminster to support families and children by bringing awareness to prevent and provide intervention and inform others of the resource available to access. Now therefore, I, three times, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo and Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Nguyen, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Westminster, and encourage all to learn about the importance of child abuse prevention and taking part in combating child abuse in our community. Thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you so much. It is an effort that at the Family Resource Center, we make all year long to keep kids in our community safe, and we appreciate everybody in this room and throughout our community's efforts to this measure as well. Thank you.
Last but not least, we have the proclamation for Black April. So may I invite Mr. Nguyen Hucuk, the president of political prisoner in Southern California. Okay, so I'm going to read anyway. Okay. Proclamation, Black April, April 30th, 2022, whereas the mayor and City Council commemorate April 30th, known as Black April or Thanh Tự Đang, and is a day to reflect upon the fall of Saigon and the fall of South Vietnam. And whereas April 30th, 1975 marked a day of great importance in both Vietnamese and American history. And whereas known as the fall of Saigon, April 30th, 1975 was a day, South Vietnam was captured by the North Vietnamese communists, which ultimately ended the Vietnam War. And whereas as many 250,000 South Vietnamese soldier and nearly 60,000 American soldier died during the Vietnam War, there are Vietnamese and Americans veterans still with us today in Westminster. And whereas the sacrifices of these soldier and the memory of their courageous act will never be forgotten. And whereas in commemoration of the 47th anniversary of Black April, the City of Westminster will fly the South Vietnamese flag half-staff. The Vietnamese-American war memorial at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park from April 22nd to May 2022. And whereas the commemoration grid will be placed at the memorial site on April 30th, 2022 at 10:00 AM. Now therefore, I, three times, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo, Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Nguyen, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Black April, in the City of Westminster, in honor of 47 anniversary of the fall of Saigon, and encourage residents observe moment silent in memory of our fallen brother who sacrificed his life for freedom. So that is Black April in the City of Westminster. Thank you. Alright, so next we have auto communication.
Thank you Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or not on the agenda, and items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, except public hearing items that will be heard separately. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person may complete a green speaker card, some of them have been submitted to us already, and you will have five minutes to speak. Any person wishing to address the City Council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you're using a telephone and have dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand. When your name is called, I will enable your microphone, and you may unmute yourself and begin speaking for five minutes. At this time, we did have, we have one person who asked to speak in advance, and that is Sam Botowski. Sam here. Okay, the next speaker in advance is Tony Buie. You may come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, and all City member, and all the people who attend the meeting tonight. It's my pleasure to be here, to be a concerned citizen of City of Westminster. And Westminster City 50 years ago is a small town with a lot of strip of strawberry fields and orange trees. Now it's thriving to be a good cities for many people to inhabit here, and thriving and on education for all our kids. So in the past couple months, the city seemed to be in slow in progress because of many problems. And today, I would like to bring the three concern that I brought here is transparency, fiduciary duty, and efficiency. Transparency is something that you all of you have been working, not together, but is in a group, which different goals for your own ego, that is not serving for the City of Westminster. So I would like to have the people to show up on the transparency of their work, so that people can vote for you again, otherwise, we will vote you down. That is the first thing. The second thing is fiduciary duties. You know that all of you was voted by citizens, by all the residents of Westminster. You have the obligation to work for the City of Westminster, not for yourself, not to fight between each of you to polish your own image, to climb up the ladder of political career. That is a wrong goal. Therefore, I thought all of you have to concern about your obligation and duties for the City of Westminster. And the third one is the efficiency. For the past years, the financials of City of Westminster has been going down, and you keep asking for more tax. Also, I know that in a couple months from now, the issue of tax will be a big problem for all of us. So therefore, I thought all of you have to concentrate how to make the city thriving, how to help smart business. Many smart business entrepreneurs, they cannot operate because they keep waiting for the business license for a long time. And you try to use political to impede their growth. That is why I come here to tell you have to shape up. And I learned that one of our City Council that I used to work with is Ms. Ho, Kimberly Ho. I used to help her when she was running. But I thought that if she can show us that she's really support for the government, for the city, then people of Westminster will award her with a thousand dollar here. If she can show that every year she contribute $20,000 to Di Hoi Thương Phê Bân Việt Nam, that means Association of Wounded Soldiers of South Vietnamese. I hope that she will show on the proof of council checks with validation of the treasurer and the CPA of that, the so-called association. Because sometimes they use donation just to brush up their image to the public, and that is not good to the community. So therefore, if you can show that, then this will be yours, so that you can bring up to City of Sacramento to clean up the City of Sacramento, California. Hope you can do it, otherwise, this gift will belong to the, to the...
Time's up. Thank you.
To the Association of Police Department.
Your time is up. Thank you, your time.
Is Sam Botowski here? And I was remiss earlier, Kit, if you could please interpret, I apologize for not allowing you time. The first speaker in person is Camilla Overbeek. Please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Camilla Overbeek, resident of Westminster. I'd like to begin by reminding everyone that April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and this week is Crime Victims Rights Week. It would have been nice for this council to acknowledge that tonight, but there's always next year, right? To all the sexual assault survivors like myself out there who might be watching, I see you, I hear you, you're not forgotten, and you matter. Item 5.1 is the review of the City Net contract and alternatives to case management for homeless support services. I've been a strong critic of City Net for quite some time now. I've repeatedly addressed how it can grow and/or inflated their numbers are. Taxpayers are footing the bill of $7,500 per month with very little to show for it. At the last meeting, the data was given for January through March. There were a whopping six street exits for those three months. If those numbers hold true for the remainder of the year, that's a total of 24 exits. And 24 exits will have cost residents $3,750 per exit. The city has toyed with the idea of a homeless shelter for years to no avail, just a bunch of time and money wasted. But don't worry, Kimberly Ho will get her monument that no one asked for, and in fact, the public has repeatedly said they don't want. As of September 2021, according to the Orange County Register, it was estimated that there were 142 homeless here in Westminster. I understand those numbers may have changed. I've gone out and spoken with many of them and asked what it is that they need. Thus far, the city hasn't done a single substantive thing to help them. Instead, we buy or lease new city vehicles to haul away their stuff. They ask for access to restrooms, the city locks them. I did some research and discovered that to purchase a shower trailer is $79,990. This trailer would have three showers, three sinks, and three toilets, one each in three separate rooms. Now, in the short two hours I worked on this, I wasn't able to get an actual number for a 12-station bunk suite. However, I did use the highest-priced shower trailer that I could find for a total of $167.94. The combined total is $247,930. It financed over five years with an interest rate of 4.5%, the monthly cost is $4,622.16. This trailer would house nearly 10% of our unhoused, and even if we allowed the individuals to stay for 30 days, we would still be averaging more street exits per month than with City Net. Additionally, those who are working with social workers would have a set place to meet and discuss their progress and next steps. This still leaves $2,877.84 per month of the 7,500 currently allocated for City Net. If you subtract an additional $1,000 for electricity and water, you're still left with $1,877.84, which is a yearly savings of $22,534.8. That covers nearly 72% of the estimated salary cost for a part-time community outreach coordinator. In my humble In my humble opinion, this would be a much better option. Those who are facing homelessness would be treated like humans, have basic needs met and a true opportunity to get whatever help they may need. And the city is spending the same amount with an opportunity for better outcomes. And I know that some of you are thinking that this is way too much money. But remember this, these two items that will help numerous people per month is just about equal to one armored SWAT car. Let's be honest, what we are currently doing isn't working. Five years should be enough time to come up with a more permanent option, at which time the two trailers could then be sold. Even calculating for a twenty percent depreciation per year, the city would still be able to recoup approximately eighty thousand dollars. And if money really is the concern, then perhaps this council should rethink their stance on the on the dispensary. The tax revenue generated from that would nearly pay for this in just one year. It's time for this council to stop sitting here wasting our time and actually start doing something to make our city better for the entire community. No more pet projects, no more campaigning for other offices when you're failing at your current one. You were elected to represent to represent the people, not just a selected few. And Councilmember Ho, you asked for ideas. This is my second that would save the city money and help the community at large. You're still at zero and yes, I'm keeping score.
The next speaker is Conrad T. Gomez.
How are you doing, City Council? I hope you all are well and good. This is the first time I've been back for quite some time. And there's a couple of items that I'd like to address. I'd love to pack it for the city clerk. And the information that I'm going to show you is in that packet and is for your review. And it's obviously, well, not obviously, it's about the Quang Tre Committee, first of all. And second of all, there's some information that I would like you to review that I also had sent a notice to Christine Cordon, the city manager back in December tenth of last year. And some of it really hasn't been addressed. My biggest issue is how many really took the the test? Because we really don't know, I'm asking for an audit. Here is mine right here and in the packet you'll have mine. And I did mine on October fifth, two thousand twenty one. I have a control number and I finished it in the time allotted and it took me three hours and fifty nine minutes. Well, the problem happens to be is in there are only two Americans, two Vietnam veterans on the committee, eleven Vietnamese, many who are Vietnam veterans themselves. They had great difficulty with English. I refer to as they speak Vietnamese, Vietnamese English. You have to really listen to them to understand what they're saying. And at times there was confusion on voting. Where one voter, whether one of the Vietnamese would, we voted on an issue. He voted wrong in the committee in Vietnamese, two or three of them told him Vietnamese, no, you voted wrong. Vote this other way. It's it's on the video of December, I believe, twenty first, you'll see them talking. And I just wonder how many really are certified? And at the last time we've had looked at it was only five. Are they allowed to be on the committee? You know, we were told by the city when we got the applications to apply that we were, we had to have it complete by October twenty fourth. What was October twenty fourth? That's when we were sworn in. I did mine, I know another Vietnam veteran did his. But why are, why wasn't there hundred percent compliance and why were they sworn in? And in the packet also, for your review, is all your parks again. We don't need another monument at Freedom Park. And I question, why do you even have a Chinese one? Chinese communist one? I know that they were fought, you know, by the Vietnamese. That wasn't part of the Vietnam War. I don't understand why you honor the communists. Here is one from the natural in national interest. How the United States Air Force and Navy saved South Vietnam in nineteen seventy two. Why the Vietnam War could have been lost even sooner. I won't read through it, but I'm just giving you the titles. From the New York Times on December twelfth nineteen seventy two, in Quang Tre, the truce is remote, is a remote fantasy. These are other uh books that I've read. Vietnam nineteen seventy two, Quang Tre, the Easter Offensive Strikes the South. That's that's all in your packet. Operation Linebacker two nineteen seventy two, the B fifty twos are sent to Hanoi. Why? Because President Nixon and President Two wanted a complete Vietnamese, South Vietnamese victory. It didn't happen. You know why? American air power, American air power. There's a difference between having airplanes like the French did and the American Air Force and the Navy and the carriers and the whole battle group of Marines and everything else. Where this Quang Tre Committee wants to state that it was only the Vietnamese who won. It was just them. But statistically, I have more statistics for you. But I didn't bring them all, I could bring you a book about yay, and we talked for weeks and weeks. And lastly, but not least, this book on Vietnam, the Easter Offensive, South Vietnamese Counterpunch, the NBA in seventy two. Quang Tre, a slugfest. And I really feel sorry for the South Vietnamese soldiers, the Army, airborne Marines, they went through hell.
Time's up. Next speaker is Robert Harrison. Please come forward.
Council staff. My public comments here tonight concern the agenda items seven point two, extending the deadline for the Quang Tre Monument Committee and the Community Services Recreation Commission. In addition, the city council is responsible to all citizens in the city of Westminster and should not be voting on an incomplete, ever-changing depiction display that has been presented along the way. The Quang Tre Monument Committee was tasked with coming up with a historically accurate depiction of the Vietnam Quang Tre Battle and to identify American and Vietnamese heroes that contributed to victory. And to be open to the general public for depictions and displays. Well, the depiction and the depiction designs that have been presented are not historically accurate and does not properly recognize the heroes. Uh, the American side for sure, they want to put them on the back. And it was not opened to the general public. We had presentations, but they were totally ignored during the meeting, no questions. Limitations have been imposed on reading public comments, removing the general public from participating in the democ, demrac, excuse me. I'm concerned with the time, the the demac, democratic process of city government. You cannot rely on all citizens going to the city's website, downloading and reading the meeting's agenda, staff reports and public comments. This is why you have received a series of emails within the last week or two explaining what's going on with the Quang Tre Committee's existence. So much time has gone by without serious consideration of code of ethics questions on the depiction and display from the committee members. And these members, us, have been excluded from behind the scene decision-making and and criteria about building that monument. We've had no input. We have had no input. I feel the Community Services and Recreation Commission is unfairly tasked with selecting a location on public lands. They're blinded, their hands are tied. There is so much dissension about putting the monument in a public park. During these meetings, it might have been fourteen to three against. The parks are for all citizens and not for some special interest group. I want a historically accurate monument honoring Americans and Vietnamese heroes. Extending the Quang Tre Committee to finalize English interpretations and not clearing all the incompleteness and what is wrong with the Quang Tre depiction display has that has been presented. It's wrong. It has not been a Democrat process. The vote is ten to one. Ten Vietnamese, one American, with American heroes being regulated to the back of the monument. It should be placed on private land. And it could be a Vietnamese-only monument. The Quang Tre Committee has had enough committee members where if one member is not able to attend, there's enough of us to continue the meeting. And what are we on, the third or fourth uh extension of time? Placement consideration should be on private land and not burden the city with future maintenance costs. Along Bolsa, in a historical and cultural district, at the cemetery on Beach Boulevard in the Vietnamese section with a boat people monument and the airborne, eighty one airborne marker. Fountain Valley has a big park. I guess I'm doing okay at the time. I urge the city council to do their due diligence, representing the entire community of the citizens of Westminster on agenda item seven point two with the history of what has been taking place with the Quang Tre Committee in emails you have.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kai Dao. Please come forward.
I need a interpreter, translator. Good evening, everyone. I was gonna wear a suit, but
Okay, I asked our, our city attorney because you know, Mr. Dao speak English fluently, so I
Don't have enough English to to
So I mean like, city attorney, so I mean like, how come he speak like English and Vietnamese?
Need to speak to the Vietnamese people.
Yeah, the general rules that you have the five minutes and you can use that time to speak in English or?
I cannot express in English what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, if you can speak in English, you should, you should speak in English.
I can speak like regular stuff, but I can't express myself.
The purposes for translation for people who can't
Five pages in, you know, try to to tell the Vietnamese people.
I think you understand English, you can speak in English.
It happened before, so I mean, there's certainly we have a change in
Why do some people have the right to speak to, you know?
The purpose is, is to allow people who cannot speak in English to communicate to the council and and to the public through that and to make sure that they're being heard.
My English is not enough, I can only speak plain English.
If I'm, if I remember correctly, you probably ran for a city council three times already and you tell me that you don't have, you don't have
That my English is enough.
And then the second thing that I want to let you know that you address to the council, not for the people. The people can't speak for themselves. If they want to speak to council, they can come to the meeting and talk for themselves. But for you, you can represent yourself only.
Oh, communication, right? Are you trying to suppress my my right to speak?
I am, I'm not saying that
Like I said, I can't, I don't have enough vocabulary to speak in English. You you want me to take me to court for that? Want to make that decision?
Sir, sir, you clearly can speak in English, I think you should
I can argue in plain English.
It's the same right that any other person has. There's only, a translation is only needed when you cannot speak. So so I would say my feeling is, is that you should be allowed five minutes to speak.
I still can't speak in Vietnamese.
You know, I It's a kind of, just a second, sir, just a second, to be patient. You know, I don't understand why we have to inhibit upon his right to speak at dress the city council and it's a job to be quiet and listen. And it's not, this is a, it's not his first rodeo, it's been here before. Okay, just so is in, you know, all the uh people come forward and and making public comments. And we have to respect their right to come and speak. So I don't understand why we are changing the policy today compared to the last meeting and meeting before that. You know what, whatever it is, it's the policy we have to um, uniform across the board, we cannot just make up the rules right in the middle of the mixed stream.
I agree, we should be consistent.
I agree with that and I'd like to say that, you know, we've always given the people the right to choose if they want to speak in Vietnamese or in English and we've never had to put them through a test. If you want to start testing people before they are allowed to ask for Vietnamese translation, then you know, you gotta be uniform and you gotta do that and come up with a test and do so. But right now, I don't see anybody has ever been contested or you've never denied anybody. I've seen that four years ago when they came up to attack me, three years ago, two years ago. And they come up and I've heard him speak English before they chose to flip. Uh, you know, I never, we never questioned as as a council. So I I think Mr. Dao needs to be able to choose what he wants to say, what language he wants to speak today. If he speaks in English, we need to translate it.
Can I have a couple of seconds?
Official language of this council, English.
City Attorney, um, thank you, Councilmember Ho. Um, yes, I've always thought that we, we haven't been doing it right for a while. Okay, and the whole purpose of of the public speakers is for account to address the council and not to address um, the public. It hasn't been done right for a while. And I agree, I mean, we're gonna, we need to get it right, we need to come up with a policy and stick to it and make sure it's, we're doing it correctly. Um, I don't know if right in the middle of this is the time. I would suggest for today that Mr. Dao choose one language and stick to it, don't come here. Last, at the last meeting, Mr. Dao spoke in English and then he translated it in Vietnamese and I thought it was wrong and I don't understand why it keeps happening. We need to make, get it right, there is a a policy and procedure we need to stick with it. Um, so at this point, I would say for the day, pick a language, stay with it and going forward, we need to get it right, we can't keep doing this.
And may I ask, city attorney? I believe that for their public speaking, they can talk directly to the council, but not represent people and you know, and then talk on behalf of people. You can talk to the council on your ideas or whatever opinions that you have in mind, but you can't say that people are doing this, people are thinking about this, people, you know, you can't represent them. You represent yourself, yes.
I I think, I think since it's not an agendized item, but we have to make a decision on this. I think the question is we we need to agendize this and make a decision, so there's a majority decision that this is how we're going to handle it going forward. What we cannot do is try and call into question whether someone can speak or not. Clearly, the reason I raised it was because clearly he can speak English um, because he's spoken many times, but I think we need to be consistent with what we've done up until this date. It sounds as though we, we've had a policy to allow it. And I almost feel like, or Christine, do you want to add to that?
So back in, so back, yes, so back in twenty nineteen, and this is pretty much the last time that we were in person. You know, to, there was discussion among the council as far as what the, you know, what the rules of translation were. So it was made clear that the whole point of oral communications in terms of the Brown Act, and I'm just going to put my clerk hat on at this point, is you are coming up to address the council. So if you are able to communicate to the council in English so that the council understands, that is the point of the Brown Act and that is, and and that is the point. It's not to address people who may not understand at home. So we did have this discussion once upon a time in two thousand nineteen. Now, it was harder to, it was, I guess, harder to, in some ways, uh, play games with translation and or interpretation when we went virtual. So this was not a problem when we were virtual. But now that we are back in person, this is going to be an issue that will be raised again. So, um, so yes, we have not been doing it consistently in the correct way for a while when we were back for a while when we were back in person prior to the pandemic. But now that we are back in person, it may be a good time to just remind that the whole point of oral communications is to address the City Council with concerns that are within the subject matter jurisdiction.
You know, I remember this discussion back in, back in 2019, when we have, I tried to push to have the CD clerk to have a policy on public comments. And we basically, we agreed that we had a supermajority of the Vietnamese-American elected official in this council understand English. So be able, when we, and since I got elected, we have the translator to come here so that the people who unable to speak English could come here and voice their concern. So there's no reason, if we want, if this council decides to change the policy, we should have an agenda item and address the issue, and we should not inhibit and stop a citizen to come here and address us. This is your time to listen. Like, I've been listened for so many hours in the past, and I'm sure you, you know, those who've been here aware of that, remember that, you know, I have my fair share, and what do I do? I just listen. Okay, so it's your turn as elected official, as a leader.
Let me suggest something.
Allow the public to speak, please.
No, no, I, you know, no, no, I like to have my input.
I just wanna, I wanna add this item to the agenda if we could, for the sole purpose of deciding how this issue will be handled tonight only, because we're talking too much about this. We can then vote on it tonight. We can get three people to say, let him speak, or be limited to five minutes. Can I have a motion to do that? This is an issue. I want to make sure his...
I have a question before, before we actually do doing that. I agree to what you proposed.
So we have the motion and that second.
But the question is, you know, like last time, he can represent himself and talk to the council, but he can't.
Well, you know what, you should not, you should not criticize the member of the public trying to address the City Council at this moment.
The CD.
It is not on the agenda and should not be...
All right, so now we have the motion and second to walk this item on agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Any clarification as to who made the motion, please?
Thing like Councilmember Dao.
Seconded by Monzo, I believe.
Is that correct?
This is to walk it on. It's a last-minute item, and I think it's important we deal with it tonight.
Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Dao, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, to add this item on the agenda. Councilmember Dao?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
This is just to walk the item on.
Add this item on the agenda. Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Tong?
Yes.
Motion carries, fans go.
So, all right, so now we have the item on agenda. Am I correct?
Yes.
Correct, Mayor.
Let's not forget that we need to let the public address this issue.
Of course, you know, we are welcome comment from any member in the public. So every member in the public have five minutes. And your English is good. We all understand your English. That's why, you know, we asking you, you speak to us in English. So we provide a translator for the Vietnamese who cannot speak English, so all of us can understand. But I mean, if you speak five minutes in English, and you speak another five minutes in Vietnamese, and I think, and then you ask the translator to translate that into English, from your Vietnamese to English, you end up to be like fifteen minutes.
So do you represent...
Just a second, just a second, sir, just a second. Okay, that is, the clock keeper is a job of the city clerk. So we already discussed this in the past, that you know, we all understand, we, you know, a lot of the members, Vietnamese-American members of the public, they can speak English, but they can express more in their own mother tongue. So, and four of us can understand Vietnamese, and there's no reason why we should, you know, not allow them to do that. The clock keeper is a job of the city clerk, and we talked about in the past, that he have five minutes to speak in his mother tongue, and five minutes for the translator to translate, okay? Can we allow the public comment to go forward now? Thank you.
Well, here's the thing, which I don't, I don't believe is correct, that if he spoke... I agree with what the mayor just said, is I thought it was wrong last time, and I should have spoke up. You cannot speak five minutes in English, and then just like the mayor described, that it doesn't seem right to me, is if you... Right now, I would suggest that if you can, if you want to just, if you have better, express yourself better in your native language, do that only. And then we can have a translator. But you cannot, you cannot have, you cannot speak English for five minutes, and then another five minutes in Vietnamese, and to have that translator, you cannot do that. I don't believe that that is right.
Was that true? I mean, the city clerk, you were the time keeper, right? Did Mr. Dao went through over the five minutes?
So currently, when the speaker comes up, in whatever language they're speaking, we allow the clock to run.
Okay.
When the interpreter speaks, then we pause the speaker's time and allow the interpreter. We don't time the interpreter. We only time the speaker that comes up.
So he never crossed the five-minute mark? Is that correct?
That's correct, because we stop it when they're interpreting.
No, I think he was, I believe he was, it was over. I mean, it sure seemed like it.
Well, you know, none of us keeping time. We're asking the city clerk, so...
Okay, well, going forward, I suggest that if that speaker finds it easier to express themselves, in whatever language you express yourself better, I suggest that would be the one. If it's Vietnamese, then be Vietnamese only, and we have a translator that can translate, so council can understand.
Mayor, I think you should let members of the public come up and address this, this issue. They're entitled to an opportunity to speak.
Right, right, of course, of course.
I think it'd be good to do that first.
Right, of course.
If anybody wants to come up and speak only to this item, you will still get a chance to speak to general comments afterward.
Yes. Okay.
I speak first since I'm here already. Well, like, I just wanted to explain to Vice Mayor Manzo, like I said, I don't have an accent. Doesn't mean I can make a case, make an argument in English. That's why you have...
No, I have, I have, I have a personal thing with this, because I have a difficult time expressing myself in Spanish.
I want to make a case here, that's why I wrote it in Vietnamese, and I'd like him to translate it into English.
Perfect. That's right. I agree with that. I have a difficult time expressing myself in Spanish, so I understand what he's talking about, so that's perfectly fine.
Anyone else from the public on this issue only?
Please come forward.
Please come forward.
Roger Midrum, resident of Westminster. I've actually thought about this quite a bit, and I've come to two conclusions right now in the last ten minutes doing this. I understand Mr. Dao's point. I kind of like to come up here and let other people on, they're watching at home, hear me instead of speaking directly to you too. But if you're gonna narrow things down to a policy, I think you should, I think he should come up here and speak for two and a half minutes in English and two and a half minutes in Vietnamese. Or full Vietnamese, and he can get a translator. Because it's happened before where somebody, I know, I've seen him speak English, but like Carlos is saying, they feel more comfortable, and that's totally understandable too. So if you're gonna narrow it down to policy, play the game, it's his free speech. You can't, like Ms. Ho said, you can't abridge his speech if he chooses to come up here and speak Vietnamese, even though you know he can speak English. Your government, you can't abridge his free speech. So to Mr. Dao, I would say, I would recommend to Mr. Dao, two and a half minutes in English, two and a half minutes in Vietnamese, or come up here and do full Vietnamese and get your translator, because they can't tell you that you can't speak Vietnamese, because they know you can speak English. That's free speech. Thank you.
Or anyone else, the person in the back? Okay.
First of all, Conrad Gomez again. First of all, I'm kind of confused right now. And what the confusion is, I thought the Brown Act said specifically English, and all of you have taken the Brown Act. So it's pretty clear. Now, what you're gonna cause, not just here at the City Council meeting, let's say, the Quang Tri Committee. So now we can let the Vietnamese all speak Vietnamese when they want to, and I don't know Vietnamese. Okay, all I know is English. You're gonna, you're gonna kind of allow other committees to follow into this issue. I would suggest to you to follow the Brown Act. That's just the way it is. No two and a half minutes here, no two and a half minutes there. I do not want to stop that gentleman from speaking, but if he can speak English, that's fine. And that's the way it is. I had to learn how to speak English, and I had to draw my native language of Spanish. It was that clear to make it in the USA. And that's how I progress, English only. And accordingly, it's the Brown Act that's telling you that. If you want to override the Brown Act, then say, why are we taking these tests? Tell me, why are we taking these tests that take three and four hours? Stick to what the law says or the act says. Follow the Brown Act. That's what you were instructed to do, and that's what you instructed me to do, being on the Quang Tri Committee. Thank you.
Hi, Terry Rains with a bad voice, sorry. Christian, I have a question. You walked on an item. It's not an urgency item. Yes, you're giving the public retro ability to speak on it, but I question the need for an urgency item or a walk-on of this item. It needs research by staff. It needs research by our city manager, and I don't think it's on the fly, an item that should be on the agenda tonight. So as far as I'm concerned, there, we have been so inconsistent, and I have to speak to our city attorney about that, because it is your job to make sure that this council stays on track with the law. And it is true, as the city manager said, the purpose of speaking up here is just to address the city council. It's not for the benefit of the audience. And sometimes we all forget that, because we want our residents to know what's going on. And half of our residents are Vietnamese. So I would love the opportunity to give my speech in English and have somebody translated into Vietnamese for the audience, but I know that's not the law. And that's not permissible under the law. But I think our city attorney and our city manager need to come back with this item. Not tonight. Let Mr. Dao do whatever he wants to do tonight, because it is not an urgency item, and it needs some research on the law. And I think we need to be consistent and have a written policy. And I don't, this on-the-fly discussion is not appropriate tonight. Thank you.
You may...
Let me just briefly respond to that. The reason I wanted to walk it on was I could see that he has rights to speak, and I didn't want to come up and make a quick decision on this. And the sole purpose of this item is to decide what we're doing tonight. The intent would be to come back, as you mentioned, and research it with a policy. But I want to make sure not to just cut him off without, without us coming to a decision as to how we're properly gonna handle his speech tonight, and/or anybody else who has the same situation tonight. That's the sole purpose of this discussion.
I like to ask the seat attorney, is that a common practice now, that we respond to every single public comment? Is that, is that the direction of this council going right now? We're gonna respond to every criticism that's come from the member of the public when they address the City Council during the the public comments?
No, there's no official policy on that.
Thank you. So, I mean, we need to allow a member of the public to speak and address the council without interruption, please. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Deor Mariskel, Westminster. Time cannot be replaced. So what have we spent, twenty minutes on this already? What do we do when we have fifty or seventy-five or a hundred people here that may or may not speak English? I agree, we need to make a decision and stick to it. Thank you.
Please come forward.
My concern with this is, Christian, on numerous occasions, you've come up with different rules and regulations as to how it's gonna go, and you've often, oftentimes allowed the mayor to run rope with no sort of guidance from you, and that is your job. It is his job to run the meeting. He doesn't do it well, but it is his job to do it, but it's your job to keep him in line. And right now, what it appears is because the mayor seems to know that he can speak English, he's requiring a litmus test, which we all know is illegal. So if that's gonna be the new standard, then we should probably address that. Because if he came up here and just spoke in his native tongue, he deserves a translator. Now, because to require, to do anything else, where do you stop and where do you draw the line when you start violating rights? So that's the issue. I also agree with Ms. Rains. This isn't an item for tonight, and merit was wrong of you to interrupt him. This should have been agendized for a different meeting.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item at this time? Mayor, let me check. Need a minute to check our Zoom speakers as well. There is one person wishing to speak on Zoom, Amy Walsh. You may begin.
Hi. Hi, I, I had raised my hand and lowered my hand to try to get your attention that I wanted to speak, but then everybody said what I was going to, so I'm, I am in agreeance with both Kibila and Terry on this issue. I mean, to me, it's clear, just, just from, I'm not even there in the room, but it's clear to me that the mayor does not want this gentleman to be able to speak what he's going to speak tonight in Vietnamese. To me, that's clear. Why, why tonight, specifically, when he's done this many times in the past? It's beyond me. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna do this, then I agree with what people have already said. But I definitely think that doing it in the middle of public comments just shows the lack of disrespect, or the lack of respect for everyone in that meeting. And it just sickens me. I'm sorry. That's all.
There's no one else on the room wishing to speak. That concludes the oral communication for this side of mayor.
I think there is, there is a misunderstanding. I welcome anyone to come here to speak any of their native languages. But I mean, like, it's really, really surprising when someone could speak English, and they use five minutes in English, and then they switch into five minutes in Vietnamese, and it happened before. That's all I ask for. Mr. Dao, more than welcome to speak five minutes in Vietnamese, and someone go to translate into English. But the issue I saw before, some of the member came here to speak perfectly in English and switch into Vietnamese, and asked our translator to translate into Vietnamese, so they add more time. That is my point. So anyone more than welcome to speak in any of their native languages. And we're going to provide a translator. That is my point. But you, I'm because of the time, but you cannot come here to speak like, because you know, you know, the loophole of the system. You speak five minutes in English, and you switch into five minutes of Vietnamese, and you request someone to translate into another additional five minutes. That's all I ask for.
Well, may I speak? Okay, I'm really kind of disturbed, because, you know, as you stated, it's like, people have, people have. But then if you were speaking about what other people have done, why didn't you agendize to talk about it properly and do so properly? But I think it is your intention, and everybody could see through that, because your intention is to suppress Mr. Dao's speech. Well, I don't know what he's speaking about or he intend to speak about, but I do know that you intend to suppress his speech. And so I've never, ever seen anything like this until tonight. We've never stopped anybody in the middle of their speech, or, you know, they're already at the podium, and he's done this, and other people have done it, as you stated, as you mentioned, that you, other people have done it. But why did you... But why did you have to stop Mr. Dao? That's very disrespectful to him and to the whole audience. So I do agree with that and I think that's really disturbing. And especially, you know, the mayor who's supposed to be running the meeting. So I, I, I think without further ado, we need to have Mr. Dao at the podium and start speaking. I don't think it's right for him to be stopped and then we have to hold a hearing all about him speaking. And then now he's sitting down and, you know, when people come up to speak, they have to gather their thoughts. So there's no respect for him and a lot of disrespect for him as well as the audience. So I just really think this is like, you know, never seen this before. So I'd be, I feel that he's being targeted. I don't need to say that, I think everybody else knows that. And I'm glad everybody spoke and I, I think quite a few people have shared, you know, the same thought and I thank you for that. But I, I, I think we need to move along with Mr. Dao being at the podium now and allow him to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do agree that this has gotten out of hand and this is not the proper way of doing this. And I, but I also understand the city attorney's, what he was trying to do. Again, I'm gonna repeat what I said earlier. I've always thought it was wrong that, you know, the whole point, and then to speak to one of the speakers as well said that, you know, our meetings are supposed to be ran in English, that's the Brown Act. You know, it's not meant to be, we need to conduct this meeting in English. The whole point and the purpose of translation is for, for the speakers, for the speakers to address the council. If the speaker does not speak English, he will need a translator. And Mr. Dao's situation and along with my situation, even though I speak fluent Spanish, I do not express myself as very well in, in Spanish. But I think going forward for tonight, we do, I would ask Mr. Dao if he feels more comfortable in Vietnamese, speak Vietnamese only. And we have a translator for that purpose. And we do need to agendize this thing and get down exactly what we need to do going forward and set a policy for this. Because we can't keep going just winging it and doing things. Every, every situation is a different thing, so.
I'd like to say one more thing, just one more thing.
Do we need to make a motion on this, city attorney?
Yeah, I would say for the purposes of handling anybody in the same situation tonight only, yes, have a motion to say we should handle it this way. I think the suggestion of, that was made, I forget the gentleman, but either speak in the, in the other language and have it translated. We're not obligated to provide a translator, but we do.
We do.
So if he wants to speak in Vietnamese, he can do that and that can be translated. And/or he could speak two and a half minutes in English, two and a half in Vietnamese. I think that's a great suggestion.
Well.
And it does protect.
For the purpose of tonight, I'll make a motion for the, Mr. Dao to either speak full Vietnamese and have it translated or use this five minutes, having it two and a half in English and two and a half in Vietnamese. That's my motion.
You know what? I, it, it's really shameful for the city council to vote and then to allow a member of the public to speak. I mean, we've been here, what, three years? How many times we've seen this? Okay? And it's, it's inconsistency. We do have a policy in translation, we do. Okay? We have a city clerk who doing her due diligence, keep the clock. No one go past the five-minute mark if they speak English. Okay? Nobody go past the 10-minute mark if they have, need to be translated. It's already established. Okay? I mean, for the mayor, jump up and you're gonna keep repeating the same thing and hopefully it's right, it's not. You know, you, you keep saying that the, the public is more than welcome to come here and speak, but right, right after that, he stopped Mr. Dao. He's, he, this is not his first rodeo, he's been here. The past three years since I've been here, very consistent, he's very vocal, there's nothing changed. And for us to introduce and walk in an agenda item, just to allow him to speak is shameful. I'm, I'm, I apologize, Mr. Dao. I mean, this is shameful for this city council to go to that point. Member of the public, when they speak, they, our job is to listen and just listen and that's it. I mean, if you go to other city, all the council member to understand that except this, this council for some reason. We think that we can, you know, respond to the, 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 uh, the public comment that made by the member of the public, like, you know, try to justify our action when they criticize it. Just be quiet and listen for a change. And allow the people to speak and voice their concern. This is just five minutes, okay? We already have a policy, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I don't think we need to make a motion to allow Mr. Dao to speak as a council. He have the right to come up and finish this speaking and we need to go, move on with the agenda on the item. This is.
What is, what is, what's the policy? If there's already a current policy, what is it? And if, if we do have a policy, why isn't it being followed?
Well, ask the mayor. Maybe it's in English.
I think the policy that the meeting is conducted by Brown Act. And in Brown Act, everyone speaking English. And the city provide a translator when a member of the, of the community cannot speak in English. So that's why, you know, that we provide. I, you know, I welcome everyone. So I mean, if there is a motion, you know, Mr. Dao more than welcome to speak five minutes in Vietnamese. But I mean, like, he should stick with Vietnamese in five minutes and we go to translate.
Okay, well, let's him do it.
Well.
I, I just, before you move on, I just want to say, I, I'm very displeased with the city attorney tonight for putting, for, first of all, taking side with the mayor. You know, that's wrong, it's just really wrong. I'm just very disappointed, very, very disappointed in your decision to put us, you know, to take his side. And I know, I, I think the whole purpose of, of the mayor was to stop him, stop Mr. Dao from voicing his opinion, whatever his opinion is gonna be. Or, you know, but I'm, I'm just very, very disappointed. So I, I think you could, you please, you know, you don't have to take side with the, you know, it's obvious that we've always let the general public decide what language they would like to speak. I've never, ever, so I disagree with the mayor when he said that if the public cannot speak English, it's not that. Okay? The practice up until, until now is whatever language they choose to speak. If they choose to speak Vietnamese, then we have, we provide a translator as we have provided a translator for everybody else. So if they choose to speak English, then no translation necessary. So it's not if they can. How do you know if they can or not, or is that the wrong word you want to use? I believe you used the wrong word because I really don't think we have tested them in the past, ever, to see if they can or they're capable or not. So I think the word you want to say is if they choose to speak in whatever language. If it happens to be Vietnamese, this council speaks English, the official language, the Brown Act. So therefore, we are provide, we provide a translator. And we've been doing that for the last two, three years. And you're right that we don't have to, but we've chosen to. We've, we've been providing and not just for Mr. Dao, but for everybody. Unless, unless we can't find one, that hasn't been the case. We've been able to find one and we've been providing a translator. So the word is not can. So if you, how do you know if that person can or cannot? Do you test? I don't see a test. I don't see anybody taking tests. So you all of a sudden decide that you're going to, you know, you're gonna look at Mr. Dao and say, hey, you can speak English. So why don't you? How dare you? Not acceptable behavior.
So before, before we, I, I think this is just a great time to move on, but, but.
That's the number one, so hold on a second.
Okay.
Yes, before we move on, I just want to have a brief comment. I, I agree with Vice Mayor Manzo. We need to check back the last meeting. I know that we ran over the term. Okay? Right now, you can say that no, but we can, we can check back for that. Secondly, I want to make sure that this is not political, okay? Will you want to address the, the council? Yes. But what you have done last time, you mix between English and Vietnamese. And then, you know, look at this right here. You actually put that enough and then you tell, you tell us that you represent people. People, you represent people. You cannot, no, 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 I'm, I'm.
Attacking a member of the public now?
City attorney, you need to put a stop to this because you're allowing him to put the guy on trial. Mr. Dao is not on trial here. It's wrong for you to allow this to happen.
In the United States, you know that, right?
You're putting him on trial, this is not allowed.
Okay, so.
I second your motion, council member, I mean.
Who are you to censor the member of the public? What they can, cannot say?
I am not censoring, I am telling the truth.
That's what you're saying, you pointed at here.
All right, all right, all right.
That is not acceptable.
We have a motion in a second, can we go around that?
Do it what you want it to do to me. I am telling you the truth.
I call the question.
Right.
Okay, so. Vice Mayor, can you repeat your motion, please?
For the sole purpose, like I said, this is completely out of hand and embarrassing at this point now, but just to get through today and, and if there is a current policy, city attorney, why isn't it being followed? But for the purpose of today, you're suggesting that we make a motion for today, is that correct?
Yeah, we had a motion, yeah.
Well, you know what?
I just want to make sure that that's what, that's what you're saying.
You know what? For us, for us to take no action on this item, okay? It's, it's shameful that we have a vote and allow a member of the public.
Why don't you make a substitute motion to no action then?
No action? And then, and then did your turn to speak, Mr. Dao? I make a motion to no action on this item.
I second that.
Mr. City Attorney.
I withdraw my motion. Mr. Dao, I'll just, please ask you, if you can, like I said earlier, I understand your situation because that's my situation. So please, if you can speak English, I mean, excuse me, if you can speak, express yourself better in Vietnamese, please do so. And we have an English translator here for that.
Yes, I agree.
That's the way it should be, thank you.
Please, okay?
So, lần trước khi mà tôi phát biểu thì có thể một số người nghĩ rằng là tôi bị đặt câu chuyện để mà bôi nhỏ thị trường Chí Tạ. The last time I spoke, a lot of people might have thought that I made things up or to smear Mayor Ta. Tại vì họ nghĩ tôi có thù hận cá nhân hay là cái vấn đề chính trị gì đó là mà không có lợi cho thị trường Chí Tạ. Uh, that, that might have came about because they might have thought that I have some personal vendetta against Mayor Ta and I was trying to do something to harm him politically. Khi tôi lên án ông ta đã sử dụng côn đồ để khủng bố và đạn áp những tiếng nói đũy lắm. So when I spoke up to denounce him for using thugs to suppress the voice or opposing viewpoints or the standing voice. Trong đó có cá nhân tôi đã từng bị băng nhóm của ông Hành Hung. And that included myself, who has been assaulted by his group of people. Trong lúc mà tôi bị Hành Hung thì ông Nghị Viên Chí Tạ, ông Nghị Vương Trao Lĩnh Minh Trí và Thị Trưởng Chí Tạ đã hiện diện ở đó. Mayor Ta and city council member Charlie Ching-Wen was, were there when I was being assaulted. Mà họ không hề có một động thái gì để giải tán đám đông hung hãn hoặc là để bảo vệ, bảo vệ tôi. And they did nothing to disperse that crowd, to protect me. Nếu cần tôi có thể cung cấp cái video clip đó cho. I can provide that video clip if necessary. Kính thưa đồng hương, nhưng mà hôm nay tôi có thể khẳng định là những gì tôi nói về thị trưởng Chí Tạ là sự thật hoàn toàn một trăm phần trăm. To my people, I can guarantee you. I can guarantee and prove to you that whatever I said here today, I can prove it with evidence by hundred percent. Chúng tôi đã inh cái bài phát biểu của tôi năm chục ngàn số vào thứ sáu. I had printed my speech to the city council and I printed fifty thousand copies. Và hôm sau vào thứ bảy và lúc mười giờ đêm, tôi đã nhận được một cuộc điện thoại. And so the day after, well, that's Saturday evening, I received a phone call. Và cái người đó nói rằng là tự xưng là Hùng Kiệt, hỏi tôi có phải khải đạo không cho ông ta địa chỉ. So that person introduced himself as Kit Kwin and he asked me to give him my address. Ông ta nói ông ta sẽ tìm đến tôi, một là ông, một là tôi chết, hai là ông ta chết. He said he would look for me and it's gonna be, well, either I would die or he would. Ông ta gọi tôi là cộng sản vì đã dám yêu cầu thị trưởng Chí Tạ từ chức. He called me a communist for asking Mayor Ta to resign. Sau khi cúp điện thoại nửa tiếng sau, tôi lại thấy một cái text message khác. So after I hung up that call, half an hour later, I received another text messages. Trong cái text ghi như sau. And that text read as follows. Xin lỗi anh Chí. I apologize to K, K I. Actually, that's the name of Nghị Viên Trao Lĩnh Minh Trí. So actually, that's the name of the council member Charlie Ching-Wen. Đây là Kiệt ở đại anh Chánh. This is Kit, K I, from Mr. Chanh, C H I N H, channel. Nửa tiếng vừa qua, một bọn bỏ báo đánh anh Tạ Đức Chí và nhóm Anh Chí. So half an hour earlier, a group of people distributing or delivering the newspaper had attacked. Beaten up. Have beaten up. Anh. À, Tạ Đức Chí. Uh, Tri Tha. Và nhóm Anh Chí. And the people in his group. Tôi hơi ngạc nhiên vì không hiểu chuyện gì. I was surprised because I did not know what was going on. Tôi cũng lo cho thị trưởng Tạ Đức Chí khi hay tin ông ta bị lách. And I was concerned for Mayor Ta when I heard that he was beaten up. Sau khi xác minh thì chúng tôi khẳng định đây là fake news. And so after verifying that, I, or we, or determined that that was fake news. Mà xem lại kỹ thì đây là số, số phone đã gọi lại cho tôi trước đó, tự xưng là Hùng Kiệt, bè dọa tìm đến nhà để giết tôi. So when I double-checked that phone number, that was a same phone number, of that person who had introduced himself as Kit Kwin, who had said that he would come and look for me to kill me. Ngày hôm sau, tôi không dám đi ra ngoài để bỏ báo, cho đến chiều mới dám lái xe đến bóc cảnh sát Westminster để báo cảnh sát. So the next day, I was so scared, I did not go out and deliver the newspaper. I had to wait until late in the afternoon to drive to the police station to make a report, the Westminster Police Station, to make a report. Trụ nhật, cảnh sát Westminster không mở cửa và họ bảo tôi liên lạc với cảnh sát nơi thành phố tôi đang cư ngủ. So it was a Sunday and so the police station was closed and they told me that I need to contact my local police station to file that report. Và tôi đã báo cáo với cảnh sát nơi tôi ở, hy vọng họ sẽ liên lạc với cảnh sát Westminster để điều tra, làm rõ sự kiện. And I had reported that to the police where I resigned and hopefully they will contact the Westminster Police Department to investigate this matter. Sau khi suy nghĩ kỹ, tôi đã hiểu rõ vấn đề và lại càng lo sợ cho an toàn tính mạng. After thinking all this over, I came to understand what this matter is and so I became more concerned for my life. Mà không nhẫn chỉ cho riêng cá nhân tôi mà còn tính mạng của những công tác riêng sẽ phải cùng tôi phát hành năm mươi ngàn số báo này trong thời gian tới. And that, that was not only for myself, but also for the people who helped me, who were associated with me to distribute the next publication of fifty thousand issues of this, this newspaper. Vì không thể phản bác lại những luận điểm và chứng cứ do tôi đưa ra. Because. Vì không thể phản bác những luận điểm và chứng cứ do tôi đưa ra khi yêu cầu Chí Tạ từ chức. Due to the fact that he cannot defend or against the. My argument. The argument that I presented, so now. Cũng như là không thể đóng đài chúng tôi như đã từng làm trước đây. Uh, so now he's doing this, just like, because he could not shut down my newspaper like he had done to my channel previously, radio station previously. Và tay chân bộ hạ của Chí Tạ đã tung tin đồn những người bỏ báo, tức là chúng tôi đã đánh thị trường Chí Tạ. And so, Tri Tha's last key had accused me. Tung cái tin đồn. Have, have. Spread the rumors. Has spread the rumor that the people who deliver news, the newspaper are attacked or assaulted. are attacked or assaulted Mayor Ta. Đây là chiêu trò họ bị đặt ra để tạo cớ, xát động những fan cuồng tấn công chúng tôi. This is their trick to raise up their, the people who supported them so that the people who supported them would attack me. Để trả thù cho chí tả của họ, cũng như để biện hộ cho những hành vi khủng bố, bạo lực đối với chúng tôi sau này. To retaliate against me for Tri Tha, and also to terrorize, to terrorize and to silence me so that I will not speak in the future, speak up in the future. Tại sao Hùng Kiệt lại xin lỗi anh chí? Tôi nghĩ Hùng Kiệt có liên quan đến Nguy Viên Châu Linh Nguyễn Mạnh Chí. Why did Kit Kwin apologize to Chi? Uh, I think Kit Kwin is associated with Charlie Ching-Wen. Hy vọng sau này cảnh sát sẽ chứng minh là tôi nghi quan đến Nguy Viên Châu Linh Nguyễn Mạnh Chí. I hope that the police would come to determine later on that I was fall-ins accusing Charlie Ching-Wen. Ờ, lần trước, cách đây lâu, hội đồng thành phố đã lên án fake news. Previously, not too long ago, the city, well, the city council had denounced, have had resolution denouncing fake news. Hai ông đã bỏ phiếu trắng. The two of you have cast an absentee ballot. Tôi đang chờ xem hai ông sẽ ứng xử ra sao đối với những hành động côn đồ và phi dân chủ này khi mà họ đe dọa giết tôi. The two of you have abstained. So now I'm gonna wait and see what you are gonna do with these undemocratic acts when these people threaten to kill me. Nếu hai ông là trong sạch, không có liên quan gì đến băng đảng này. If you're totally, if you're totally clean, above you are totally clean and you have nothing to do with these thugs. Thì hai ông phải công khai, mạnh mẽ lên án những hành vi côn đồ của cái đám mà khủng bố, đe dọa giết những người đưa báo cũng như là đối lập như chúng tôi. So the two of you need to speak up and denounce the people who threaten and terrorize the people who deliver the newspaper like myself. Nếu mà hai ông không có dung tủng, không có ủng hộ những cái hành động, những cái lối hành xử mọi rợ côn đồ này thì hai ông phải công khai lên án họ và phải có thái độ thích đáng. So if you two do not condone these barbaric acts, then you two need to speak up and condemn these, the act appropriately. Và rõ ràng qua cái hành vi mà cấm không cho tôi trình bày là một lần nữa chứng minh là ông là luôn luôn tìm cách bịch miệng những người như tôi. And so you can see through it, you know, from the fact that you're trying to silence me. It shows that you're trying to suppress or silence my voice. Tức là tìm cách không cho mình nói. By trying to not allow me to speak earlier. Giờ vâng, xin cảm ơn quý vị đã lắng nghe Khải phải nói tiếng Việt để mặt dù trình bày với hội đồng thành phố. Nhưng Kiệt thì phải nói được rõ ràng hơn, xin cảm ơn quý vị đã lắng nghe. And so on that, thanks for listening to me, for allowing me to speak in Vietnamese because I, so that you can understand me and also that I can express myself better. Và Khải cũng xin thành thật xin lỗi tất cả những người dân không nói tiếng Việt, xin cảm ơn. And again, I apologize to all the residents who do not speak Vietnamese. And on that, thank you. Good night. Good night.
Mayor, the next speaker is Deborah Mariscal. Please come forward.
I'll try to make it short. Thanks, Chief, for the call this week. Appreciate it. I get to do my second ride along. Yes. Um, so we had the proclamation for the DMV. So I would also like to include, we are always short on blood. So if you can give to the American Red Cross, I'm O negative. I can give to premature babies, give blood. That's another way of giving life. With what we just went through right now, is it possible? I don't know. Is it possible for us to put the timer up on the screen so we can see how long somebody has been speaking? Because I think we spent about 45 minutes on this last issue. So that would be a recommendation. I would like to see if that's at all possible. And then, about Measure S-S. Nobody likes to see taxes go up, but we're paying tax, we're paying the one tax right now anyway, the 1%. I'm not asking you to personally condone or support the tax. What I am asking you is to give the residents and the voters of the city of Westminster the opportunity to make our voices heard by being able to do that vote. I understand that a couple of you are running for other offices. You don't want to make it look like you're supporting tax increases. But look where we are as a city. We're not in a good place. I think it's been pretty clear by many of the residents who have spoken that we want to vote on it. So I'm asking you to do that. And the last thing is the monument. Put it on private property, and let's be done with it. We've spent a lot of time over the last, however many months that it is. Some people support it, some people don't. You as the council members need to be focusing on issues that are more important to the city's survival and to the residents, all of us of the, you know, of the city. That's all I have. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Terry Rains. And she has submitted an item that she wishes the council to have as she begins to speak. I understand that that's something that this council has done before.
I'm sorry, what was the question again? What was the comment again? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Terry, lost my voice, Rains. I'm providing you a copy of all of my comments because my voice is not good, and I probably wouldn't get through at my normal speed of five minutes. But I am asking you to pull several consent calendar items that are on there that I'm not gonna be able to verbally speak. But I hope, I had, I'd hoped this would get to you before the meeting started, but it didn't. Anyway, I'm gonna speak on a couple items up here. Item 3.6, the violent crime stats are very troubling. Robbery up 77%, and aggravated assault up 68%. But four council members don't seem to give a damn about our police department staffing. They are hell-bent on defunding our police by refusing to let us vote on whether or not to extend the 1% local tax measure. Mayor Ta, Councilwoman Ho's assembly campaigns tout them as pro-law enforcement and against defunding the police. Yeah, right, hypocrites. Regarding item 7.2, the Quan Chi Monument Committee is responsible for this delay. They have had six months to meet and finalize the design. They presented architectural plans that were never seen by or approved by the whole committee publicly. They rescheduled meetings from April 4th to the 11th, the 25th, to May 9th, all because one member had issues. Since when do we cancel meetings when one member of an 11-member committee cannot attend? First, Vice Chair Hong's computer had a virus. And sadly, one of his family members passed away. And staff was told that he would be in Vietnam for the arrangements, missing the meeting on the 11th. But guess what? He was right here in Westminster planning and attending their fundraiser, which was on the 10th, the night of the 10th, the night before the meeting was scheduled. Now they need more time to get proper translation of the narrative. But they've had four months to do that. A secret majority meeting was likely held on the 20th per an email from another member saying that he could not attend that meeting. Emails continue between a majority of members discussing official city business. I have reported this repeatedly to all of the city staff. Brannet violations, exclusion, lack of transparency and secrecy abound with this group. Council, it is time you take the city out of this mess and direct them to complete this project as a private foundation on private land. Enough is enough. Recent LA Times article put this council's dirty laundry and my horrible picture out there for all to see. Prominent people from all over this county are asking me, "What the F is wrong with your city council?" My reply? "Everything." And I meant, you have become the left stock of the county and a true embarrassment to all of us, especially our beloved Vietnamese refugee community, who are the ones that put at least four of you into office. So, I'm gonna say, vote no to Tri Tha or Kimberly Ho for Assembly. Vote yes on Measure C to eliminate the elected mayor and go to a rotational mayor, and let us vote on the tax measure. Let us vote. Let us vote. Let us vote!
The next speaker is Roger Mindrum. Please come forward.
All right, good evening, Roger Mindrum, resident of Westminster. Well, that big delay kind of threw a loop in my comprehension here, so hopefully I'll be coherent here. First, I'd like to just say that I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to the council here, but I just want to tell the council that I really appreciate my fellow residents here tonight and those of us who continue to be here and speak our voices. Appreciate Mr. Dao always coming up here and facing the backlash that he does. Apparently, there is some backlash to Vietnamese people who speak out against each other, so I do appreciate him. Mr. Harrison and Mr. Gomez, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your service to our country. Thank you for your perseverance and continued support and for your community. So I really appreciate you too. City staff, the last meeting, Mr. Ozada and Mr. Radke did a great presentation. You project professionalism and your dedication to what you do, and it shows, anybody goes and re-watches the, or watches these meetings or re-watch on YouTube, shows your professionalism, so I appreciate you guys and all the city staff. And towards the agenda items, I'll agree with everyone who spoke regarding the Quan Tri monument, I believe, as those others have spoken, that it belongs on private land. It's a private issue. A very small percentage of the population in the city want it, care about it, will want or care about it in the next 50 years, that that's gonna be subjected to a city park, put it on private land, really. The next subject that nobody really spoke about yet tonight was the 6.2 request for ordinance making it illegal to possess an uninstalled catalytic converter without proof of ownership. I think the intentions are good. I've heard Huntington Beach has passed some kind of an ordinance. Maybe Mr. Bettenhausen can elaborate, or maybe even Chief Lanyer. But what would be, what is the difference between an ordinance and a law? If this ordinance doesn't go on the penal code, what's the enforcement? Put yourself in the position, and I'm sure Mr. Councilman Doe, you obviously in this position to do a traffic stop with, you do a traffic stop for whatever reason, and you see a catalytic converter in the trunk of a pickup or a bunch of them, which they're gonna have sawzalls and tools and things like that, a jack probably. But those of you who are not in law enforcement, who are gonna be discussing this, I don't see the point when there's already a law for theft. So maybe you can explain to them on a traffic stop, what's gonna happen? Or if you're gonna pass something, be more specific, because if it was just this wording that says uninstalled catalytic converter, you need to specify that it was already been installed on a vehicle. Because what they do is, you have a catalytic converter, and there's a flange on each end which bolts onto another pipe, whether it comes off the engine exhaust manifold or beyond to a pipe that goes out the back of the car, and they go in and they just cut them off on each end or wherever they can. They don't unbolt it, so nothing's clean. But if you're gonna do something like that, be specific. But maybe please explain to everyone how this ordinance supersedes law. Is this ordinance a misdemeanor or felony? I think it's good intention, making a point, or is it somehow law? How is a city ordinance enforceable law? Because that's gonna lead to an arrest and a charge and the district attorney and a court case charging that person for what have you. They're over $950, so it's more than a misdemeanor already, so... Anyways, it's been a, another eventful meeting. I, I've told people in the past that the city, there's no other city like this in this country. I've been more and more convinced at this in the last couple of years, and every single meeting, it seems like it's more and more. The voting block of the city is one thing, but what happens in this room? Nothing else like it, so have a good night.
Was there anyone currently here that would like to speak? Not seeing anyone here. Mayor, we do have someone with their hand raised, Amy Walsh. I will unmute you, and you may begin speaking.
Thank you. So, being a Zoom speaker, I get to hear everyone else's comments, and a lot of people have already said things that I had written down. So, on that note, I'd like to say that I agree, first off, with Camilla, who was speaking in regards to CityNet. After this last meeting that we had, I truly hope that CityNet has decided to show up and grace us with their presence tonight. Because, and I really hope that the council holds them to task. Uh, let's see. Uh, well, one thing right off the bat is, I, like I said a little earlier, I am just thoroughly disgusted with how, you know, public comments were stopped because Tri Tha wants to talk about the fact that someone has or can speak English. I mean, it just, it was ridiculous that he even started with that. And then, at the end of that, I would say it was at least 30 minutes, because I was kind of watching. Then he says, "Well, yes, I, I want everybody to be able to speak." And it's like, well, why did you even say anything in the first place then? Why not wait and put it on an agenda for the next time? It, it was just a grandstanding issue. Like, that's all it was. And he clearly, after hearing what Kai Dao was speaking, did not want him to talk about any of that. And it's just, it's stupid and ridiculous. Um, in regards to the Brown Act, I wanted to read a quick little blurb where the Brown Act authorizes legislative bodies to adopt reasonable regulations on public participation. The authority includes adopting regulations on public testimony. Such regulations must be enforced fairly and without regard to the viewpoint of the speaker. And I wanted to make sure that some council members heard that. Fairly and without regard to the viewpoint of the speaker. You cannot assume that someone is going to stand up and know what they're going to say. Or if you know that that person is a critic of yours, you are not allowed to then try to make it so that they cannot speak. And I'm sure that who, Mr. Ta and Mr. Nguyen, after I speak, will probably make some comments about, "Let me, let me say this," you know, like, you know what? You don't need to respond to every single public comment. Um, the other thing that I would like to say is, I really, really think that while these meetings are now back in person, if we can make sure the council members don't fall asleep at the dais, that would be great when people are talking. asleep at the dais, that would be great when people are talking, because again, that's rude and disrespectful to the public. And one last thing that I have been meaning to say is the people that are running the cameras for these meetings, you know, we, tonight alone, we have dealt with the council members not letting us vote for taxes for the city. We've dealt with council members that don't want certain people to speak. And now, well, not now, let's be honest, this has been going on from pre-COVID. We have the people that are doing the cameras, trying to move the camera view so that we don't see the signs that are in the audience. And I think that is just ridiculous. Talk about, that, those are free speech, there's nothing saying that you can't have signs. And if now people are going to try to make it so that the rest of the public can't see those signs, hmm, I think that's an issue as well. And this has frustrated me since even pre-COVID, and I'm watching it happen tonight, and it just infuriates me. I, this, this council, over the last few years, has just made it so clear that they could care less what the public actually says. And every meeting, no joke, every meeting.
Time is up.
I'm sorry, it just, it, every meeting, it just gets worse, is what I'm trying to say. Sorry.
Mayor, there are no more members raising their hand on Zoom, and that concludes oral communications.
All right, so we don't have any, any other.
No, Mayor, there are no others.
All right, so I'd like to close oral communication. Next, we have consent calendar. All matter listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member of the city council or staff requests that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. I'd like to pull item 3.6.
I'd like to pull item 3.7, and I believe the staff pulled 3.3, correct?
I believe that our staff already pulled 3.3. Okay, okay. So may I have the motion to approve the rest?
Motion to approve the rest. Second.
All right, so we have the motion and a second to approve consent calendar, but two item, right? 3.3 and 3.6.
3.7, 3.7, too.
3.7.
3.7.
Oh.
Yeah, 3.3, 3.6, 3.7.
All right, okay, yeah, all right.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, item 3.3, agreement between the City of Westminster and California Department of Parks and Recreation for the Mendez Freedom Trail and Association of Grant Funds.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak on item 3.3, which is a, an agreement between the City of Westminster and the California Department of Parks and Recreation for the Mendez Freedom Trail and allocation of grant funds. I have a presentation. I'm going to take an opportunity to reintroduce the public now that we're live and back in person. Thank goodness for that. Introduce the council and the public to the grant efforts that have been ongoing for quite some time. We'll wait for that presentation to pop up. So I'll start off with the good news, and the good news is that right now we're looking at, we've secured $8 million since this council gave us the authorization to aggressively pursue grant funds for infrastructure, safety, recreation, and beautification in the city. All of that was born of the efforts that took place in 2016 and as part of the general plan update. With the general plan update, that was a $1 million investment. Just in this area alone, we have $8 million worth of grants that could not have happened without the general plan update effort. As I go through these projects to refresh everybody's memory, please keep in mind that there was extensive outreach that took place over the years. We went out to the community members, to students, to teachers, to schools. We outreach and we had very, very targeted outreach and extensive outreach. So these are ideas that were presented to the council, but ideas that were maybe born from staff, right? Because we are the technical experts, but there's many different ways to present these projects. And after outreach, we defined the project based on the people's input, then we brought these projects to you. So go ahead and move on.
Can, excuse me, Mr. Ozada, we can't see that.
Okay. We'll wait and get that squared away right now. So there we are. The first, the first page was just the cover sheet, so you didn't miss much.
We can't see.
You can't see it up there, okay. Great. Okay, so I will be focusing on what we're calling Mendez Program Update, which is the cover slide you see before you. It really all starts with one of our most important residents in the city's history, her name Sylvia Mendez. This is a picture of her in 1947. She was not allowed to attend a school due, based on her ethnicity and color of her skin. She was turned away and her family chose to essentially question and ask the question why, right? So she, we are at the 75th anniversary of a historic ruling, and we have decided, we decided this back in 2016, that we would work with Ms. Sylvia Mendez and essentially brand some of these projects in her honor, as this decision not only allowed her to attend schools in Westminster, but it also desegregated schools in Orange County in California. And this happened almost seven years before Brown versus the Board of Education. So it's a very significant event in the city of Westminster, and it was the actions of our residents that really changed the world. So we're highlighting the Mendez family. This is, this is her in 2017 here at the dais, speaking before the council and the public. She remains an advocate. She had a very successful career in the nursing world and then dedicated the rest, she's dedicating the rest of her life to these types of efforts. So she, she's been a supporter of our projects. And these projects can really be described as three separate projects. What we see here on the map, we have the Mendez Freedom Trail, which is the, the blue line you see going up the middle of the city there on Hoover. It's a very important corridor. There's a lot of historical context to that, to the placement of that project, and there's also safety, blighted issues that we've been addressing for many years. So we're, again, we're hitting all those things that, that council identified as very important to, to them and to the community. The next project is the Garden Grove Boulevard Project, that kind of zigzag, zigzags from Hoover all the way to the west end of town. And then you see a green dot right next to the Hoover Trail, which represents the Mendez Tribute Park. So the next slide is a pretty busy slide. It's actually two slides. It identifies what we call our stakeholders for this effort. The movement and the effort continues to grow. I've highlighted the first four because these are where our grant funds are coming from. $8 million worth of grant money has come from the Urban Greening Program, Caltrans, California State Parks, and then a, a separate allocation directly from the Office of Senator, State Senator Tom Umberg. So again, that's where the $8 million are coming from. I will go on to the next slide and just highlight the fact that everybody, including the big agencies, are in support of our project. At the very bottom there, where it says Mendez Individual Supporters, I can tell you there's pictures out there in a newspaper of kindergartners and first graders donating their own money to this project. So it really, it's, it's a really nice thing to see materialized. Back in 2016, Mayor Ta, you were on the SCAG board back in those days. Thank you for your help in, in getting this project brought to the city. We worked with Vanessa and Community Services. We worked with the Youth Committee. We brought an event to the community that essentially allowed people to envision their streets differently and not just schematically, but actually by physically writing and operating these corridors differently than they, than they would do on a normal basis. This was the most successful SCAG event. They had events all over the SCAG region, and for those of you, the SCAG region goes from Ventura all the way down to San Diego. It's, it's an enormous region. We had a lot of support, a lot of good ideas came out of this effort. We'll go on to, this is what Hoover Street looks like today. We talked about Mendez Trail and Hoover Street, so we use those terms interchangeably. This is what it looks like today. We've heard, we've heard of speeding on this corridor. We've heard of a cut through traffic. People are not happy and comfortable walking the trails because of the high-speed corridor. We have obtained the funding as part of this Mendez project to transition this corridor to this, to, to this rendering here. So this would introduce landscaping, it would introduce a separation between vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. There's a turn pocket that wasn't there before that's introduced. So those are safety elements that our police are very excited to be a part of. It will inevitably reduce speeding, reduce cut-throughs, and make this more of a community corridor as defined in our specific plan. So again, we're touching on all those things that council found to be important. As you look here to the right, there is a placeholder for what an interpretive panel looks like. It was just kind of a placeholder at the time. We worked with the Orange County Department of Ed. We worked with the landscape architect as part of our grant money to go ahead and recreate and re-envision that interpretive panel to something much more exciting and interactive, which is what you see there. Again, all of the historical content, the color scheme, all of that is selected by our consultants, put together, and it'll be available in three different languages accessible by your cell phones and made possible through our partnership with the Orange County Department of Education that have donated every single hour that they've put onto this project for probably four or five years. They've donated all of their hours to this effort. This is one of four stations that will be along Hoover. Next, we'll go on to the Mendez Tribute Monument Park, which is another fully grant-funded effort. I thank you again for your support on that. You'll see some of those interpretive signs, interpretive panels on the right there along the wall. You'll see that there's four statues. You'll see that it's deemed appropriately. We're going to be pumping Wi-Fi to the site so that it's fully interactive. These are, these are, this is input we, we obtained from youth committee and student members that Vanessa brought to our, to, as part of our stakeholder team. They wanted the site to be more modern and interactive and not like a typical museum, they said. They wanted it to be accessible with their cell phones and things of that nature. So we implemented these design, design features. I'm excited to show in the next collage, it's kind of a collage of images, that on the, from left to right, that was all of us. We were fortunate to be out there with Senator Umberg, receiving the $1.5 billion check. At the very bottom left there, that is the production crew from the Soledad O'Brien Show, which is a nationally syndicated show. They were highlighting our park to the rest of the country. In the middle there, you'll see that Christine and I participated in some outreach events with Vanguard University. That's officially our first visitors to the park. Those are student teachers that are committed to bringing back students to the park site to advance the topic of civil rights and the efforts of the Mendez family in Westminster. It has really taken on a lot of notoriety. On the top right, you'll see that that's something that the cool kids call a Google doodle, that, that is what you find on your homepage every morning. People log on to Google just to see what they're going to surprise them with. We were fortunate that they went ahead and featured the Mendez family there. You'll see Mrs. Mendez, and then you'll see in the background, her father walking the two kids to school. And there on the bottom right, that gives you a little bit more contrast from where we were when we received the check, which was, I think, in the fall of last year, October. Thank you, Christine. And then this was us in January of this year on the right, yeah, around January. So you've seen that the site is completely transformed. The four statues, two of them have been completed. The two primary statues are in production, and they will be delivered to the site very soon. I'll talk a little bit about how these projects are coming along as far as delivery in the next, towards the end of the presentation. I said I'd start off with the good news, and then I do have some bad news to share, but we'll talk about that at the end. Garden Grove Boulevard, again, blighted corridor, speeding, cut through. That is just an opportunity for people to dump sofas and contractors to dump debris at the end of a hard workday. We are transitioning that over to the next slide, which is again, a, a class four bikeway. It's just adding another opportunity for recreation in our community. We don't have enough park space, we all know that, so we have to be creative. This is one way of being creative. We're filling in this space as something that's productive and something that the community has been asking for. If you can envision that zigzag corridor, we, that this exhibit shows you what it looks like over by the RV dealership moving east. As you get to Edward Street, which is the next corridor, this is what it looks like today. That, I did not draw in that donut in the middle of the street. That's exhibition driving. That was there, just happens to me in the picture, but that's the kind of stuff that happens on those corridors. There's too many lanes, too little traffic, and people have a lot of wiggle room, and they usually speed, they usually drive aggressively. We do have bicyclists, that's actually a real bicyclist, I didn't Photoshop him. If you go to the next one here, I did move him over. I did Photoshop him over to where the bike lane will be. As you can see here, we're adding a turn pocket down the middle, so a lot of the rear end collisions, everybody in Indian Village knows, when I stop in that lane, people are right up behind me, I can't make a left turn. Now there'll be people that'll be able to turn left, pull into those turn pockets and be a lot safer. Then we transition down to the middle school, and then here we are, along trasse, moving towards Hoover. You'll see again, super wide corridor, 100% residential. When our found, when our, you know, founding fathers of Orange County laid out the circulation network, they didn't want to end up in the situation LA is in, where they were just not allocating enough roadway. So needless to say, there was, in some cases, more roadway that was needed envisioned. And instead of a business corridor, you ended up with a residential corridor. So, but indeed, by default, when we transition this to the next slide, which is the, the rendering, we will be addressing speeding. There's several schools along the corridor. Property values have been proven to go up when these types of projects are implemented. You no longer live on a cut-through four-lane roadway, you live on a residential community roadway. So now, I will get to the, to the next slide here. I'm almost done with the presentation. This is just the, what I'm calling a project status. I'm highlighting the three projects, because those are the ones that we, that we showcased tonight, and they're all themed under pro, under the Mendez program. Your support letters, the support letters of our neighboring agencies, OCTA, Caltrans, it's been a wonderful effort to get the projects to where they are. The Mendez Tribute Park, we are, we are behind, we were, we were aiming for April. We had some issues due to production, due to COVID. So the statues took longer than they needed to, but the statues will be in place, and we're hoping for a grand opening of the park September, and that coincides with National Hispanic Heritage Month, so it's kind of a good, a good fit. The Garden Grove Project, the note there is, construction has been authorized by Caltrans, so that's, that's a huge hurdle. That was approved by the California Transportation Commission in January, approved by Caltrans in February, and we're working diligently, our engineering team, again, this is a, I mentioned Vanessa, I should have mentioned Jake as well, Tuan, Veronica Bill, it's, it's just been a complete effort by all city staff to move this, to move all of this forward. The bid package is being prepared, and we're, we're looking for a completion date on the Garden Grove Project of December. The biggest issue right now is, is a material procurement, and of course, contractor prices have gone up, so we're, we're gonna, we're gonna maneuver our way through that. But everything is 100% moving forward with one and two. Now, three, I had to save the bad news for last, right? So we have about $4 million locked into the Mendez Trail. It's the most important trail of all of the, of all of what I'm showing you today because of the historical content, because of the need for safety improvements. We have not received Union Pacific authorization. Christian and I have been working with, Christian, our city attorney and his team, we've been working with the California Public Utilities Commission for two years. We've gone down to downtown LA, we've had our arguments with them. We cleared a major hurdle in December. They wanted us to contribute upwards of $5 million to improve the rail line. We adamantly said no. I got to give Christian and his team all the credit in the world for taking that conflict away from the engineers and technical people and just dealing with it amongst the legal minds, so we were able to move past that, and we do have an agreement that says that we'll work with them to help them improve the rail line through grant fund efforts, not out of our own dime, but through grant fund efforts. One of the issues now, and one of the issues that continues to be the case with Union Pacific is that they're a, they're a, they're really a, an entity that is in transition, they've laid An entity that is in transition. They've laid off a lot of their full-time employees. They've gone to an all consultant team. So as we maneuver through this process and we try to get to the point where we're getting authorization to construct it. Our engineers a hundred percent ready for the design. The design is ready to go. It just keeps going from one hand to the next. We've gone as long as nine months without hearing from a Union Pacific rep over this, you know, three-year period. And while we continue to move things forward, we do need a final approval from them. So what we've decided to do, what I'm bringing before you today, just, just to bring you, to bring everybody, um, on board with, with the ideas. We are going to force them to meet with us weekly. So I'm, I've asked officially today to have weekly meetings on this very topic. Um, whether they show up or not, we will be there. We'll be logged into Zoom, waiting for them to log in so that we can say that we are here and ready. Um, but the most important part is that we, we hope the council supportive of us working through the city manager. Um, on a more public affairs approach. Um, I personally believe there's people at Union Pacific. That don't know the significance of this project. And right now it's really bogged down by the technical team and I can't explain why. It just is bogged down with the technical team. It's not moving forward. And we have until December to show a lot of progress on this. Or the grant money that was allocated to this project is going to start to disappear and we, we cannot let that happen. So um, that, that concludes my overview of the projects. Again, tonight, the Action Freedom 3.3 is. For council to support, um, essentially entering into an agreement to receive the 1.5 million dollars from Senator Umberg. No, it's been a while since we had the check ceremony, but. Kind of works that way. They, they do the, the public presentation. This is just the paperwork. To essentially have Aaron, our finance director, set up an account for the project. Um, but in addition to providing you with an overview of all the good stuff we're doing and get everybody back excited about the, the, the projects. We did have, uh, we wanted to inform you, uh, that we have the, the two-track approach to really deliver, uh, the project that is in most jeopardy at this point. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
I'd also really appreciate your presentation that, uh, I believe, uh. You were one of a few staff, uh, really involved at beginning. Uh, with the project. I think that, uh, uh, I'm really proud of the community. And I think this is the community project, the community, uh, work with the city and, uh. But I kind of, you know, uh, surprised that I think the city council will approve a long time ago, right? But this is a long process and we ask for, uh, support from other agency. Uh, like the state, the board of education and I, I mean, I really want to thanks, uh, from a council member, Sergio. Sergio Contreras, he, uh, he's the one who pioneer. The project and I strongly support that. So I think that we have, uh. We got to have a really beautiful park that we could able to power. So really thank you for your report. Yeah.
Uh, can I say a couple of things? Thank you, Mayor. Um. I want to say, I want to echo the mayor's comments. Uh, thank you for, uh, you championed it, championed this, this project. It's been, uh. I've spoken to you about this before that. You know, um, something so monument, monumentous in our, not only in our city, in our state, but something that changed our whole nation. Happening here in, in, in little Westminster and. I've always felt we should have been, you know, yelling from the rooftops, announcing it, just doing everything we can to make, let everybody know that. That this happened here in our city. But um, so thank you for all your hard effort, um, and staff, everybody that's been helping you. Uh, I personally think that. You know, you've gone above and beyond, you know, the call of duty with this and I'm really proud to, to have you. You know, be the champion of this and thank you so much. I just have a question about. You know, um, it seems to me like we're being kind of being held hostage by Union Pacific. Um, and it's something that we need this part to be complete to, to. To have a complete project with the park, the Mendez Park, um. What, what can we do, um, to put pressure on United Pacific to? Forget us past this hurdle and get us going and, and get this project on the way. What can we do?
Had a complete set of plans. It's very frustrating for the technical folks at City Hall that we've had a complete set of plans. Uh, prepared by staff and a consultant team for two years. And every time it goes through the Union Pacific. You know, sets of eyes that look at it, it comes back with a different set of comments, or sometimes it doesn't come back with anything. We have to. Call every week for months on end to get comments back. So. You know, that, that's part of the frustration and it's important for me to, to let everyone, because I know Mayor Ta brought up the fact that. It's been a while and I, last time I came before you, I said it's two years away. We've been fighting for two years instead of building. This one, I mean, the Mendez Park has moved like we said it would. But this one with Union Pacific is probably the biggest challenge that we've had to face. What we can do is we have, we have Congressman Lawenthal. Who checks in with us regularly, Senator Umberg. Who contributed money to this. I know Christine, uh, is in contact with other, other Assemblyman Statement, uh, State Assembly. Folks, um, what I would like to do, and this is something that Christine and I have discussed is, you know, we want to get the Union Pacific Public Affairs Representative. In a room with the council, with the stakeholders, with Ms. Sylvia Mendez. You know, when Sylvia Mendez came before the selection committee and we brought her in to be a part of the interview process. Uh, our chief provided the fire station. We met there. She, she's, her sister said, my sister is old. My sister's. Not going to be around for a long time, but not often are we able to build something for a historic individual who's still with us. So we really need to put pressure on the public affairs, not the technical team that are just. Maybe just, you know, looking at this as everyday business and getting to it when they can, right? Can't really speak to what's going on within Union Pacific, but I know that our consultant who specializes. One of the reasons we picked that consultant is they specialize on rail projects. And they are finding themselves in the same situation statewide. We need to put pressure on the California Public Utilities Commission. So we, we need to have a summit really here at City Hall, where, and we need to start making a lot of noise because we can't afford. To let this project. Fall by the wayside. We can't lose $4 million worth of grant funds that we fought for, uh, and competed for. Remember all this grant funding. We're competing statewide with other cities and we're making a case. That this is a great project. We can't have a technical team at UP turn their backs on us and have this fall by the wayside.
Can we, can we set something up where we're contacting, uh, Lawenthal's office, Umberg's office, uh. General, uh, Senator Wynn's office? And get it, get something going because we can't. We can't be held hostage to these, to Union Pacific and also be in jeopardy of losing those funds. That if we lose those funds, then this project is dead.
Absolutely. And in, in addition to that, that roadway that is in dire need of repair, that is a part of, of Public Works Director Jake Knows. Um, pavement management plan, it's also sitting idle. So we're holding, we're holding off on paving a roadway because we can't. Pave the roadway and then tear up the roadway to build the project, right? So. The community is now suffering because we're waiting on Union Pacific.
Yes.
But to answer your question, one of the goals was to come before you tonight, let you know what the situation is. And like I said, Christian's been working with this for a few years and helped us. Overcome some major hurdles. But at this point, now that we presented this to council, we get feedback from council. We're going to work through the city manager to make sure that we put together this summit. This, um, this, uh, this gathering of the minds to be able to move this project forward.
Yeah, I have an, uh, I'm had another question. So what is the deadline that we need to, uh, we need to use all the funding?
So the deadline for construction of the Mendez project is twenty, end of, end of the year.
End of the year.
Very uncomfortable. I lose sleep over that deadline. Um, we are reaching out to Urban Greening. Which is the main funding source that's going to expire in 2022. I've reached out to them today and said, hey, this is where we're at. We're going to council tonight. It looks like we're going in a different direction as far as, you know, moving this, this project forward. Are you okay giving us an extension past that? To be a hundred percent honest with you, the more extensions we get, the more time Union Pacific takes. Oh, the longer it takes to deliver the project. So going back to the original. Proposal by staff is that we are given authorization through the city manager to start. Reaching out to individuals to get everybody together to be able to put more pressure on Union Pacific. Because when you look at the checklist from a technical perspective, we've been here for two years. I, I really can't tell you. Um, and it's unfortunate for me as a technical person to have to say that about technical people at Union Pacific. It is just inexcusable that they're sitting on something as basic as a stamp because it's ready to go.
So what, what would be the main reason, uh, why they, um, ignoring us? What would be the main reason? Because I know that our city staff, including you, tried to contact with them, but I mean, they. Not really responding.
Yeah, they, they have a very unique process. Like I said, at one point they had a centralized office in Omaha and I used to interact with them on other projects. You, you finally got a hold of Omaha and then all of a sudden things would start to move. But what's happened is they've, they've let a lot of their staff go and they rely on consultants throughout the nation. To manage these projects. So what ends up happening is you have one set of consultants looking at it, working with us for a year and a half. Approving it. It goes to the next, you know, for a final, final, and all of a sudden that new group of people in another part of the country. That don't even know Westminster. Are commenting differently on it and they're equally as important as the previous group. So we have to work with them. So we're kind of going in circles. That's kind of in a nutshell. It's unfortunate, um, that that is happening.
Yeah, um, the other question I have for you, so. I know we're always, you know, in search of other, other grant funding for other projects. What is a project? What does this situation do? Does it put it in jeopardy? Uh, say, hey, well, these guys can't even complete. They can't complete this project and they got the money. They've been sitting on the money for. In two years, basically.
Yes, two, uh, uh, se- several years ago, we consolidated the grant funding efforts that the city was doing. Every department was kind of. Seeking grant funding on their own and, you know, being successful at, at that. We consolidated it so that now we have more of a collaborative effort. We meet monthly and we address. All the city's grant needs so that everybody's on board and we report back to the city manager. As to what the city status is of grant funding. To answer your question specifically, I am at a point right now where I know not to apply. For additional grants for transportation infrastructure. Because we have to show success in order to gain more funding. So we are, we are at a standstill and it is affecting our ability to seek other grant funds. So it is. We, we should have had this project open in April. And we are, we are behind. So. I'm, I know it. I know the game enough, that the grant game enough to know that. I'm wasting my time by putting a, a city effort together to go after additional funds if we have not showcased this. In the look at what we can do package, right? As part of showcasing what we're able to do. So it is definitely affecting our, our ability.
Well, I mean, I would like to see that, that summit come together because we can't wait any longer. So, I mean.
I have a, I have questions real quick. Uh, have we, um. Have we tried to get a whole reach out to the, uh, corporate, uh, headquarters? Uh, talking to the CEO or sending an official letter and try to reach out to them to help them. Uh, maybe the CEO was executive. Do they have a, a board trustee or do they have a board trustee that could reach out and have them? Persuade them to intervene. Sounds like, um, the, uh. Contractors, the so-called contractor that, uh, taking care of all these, uh. Transactions seems like, you know, we are the, not very important. Uh, maybe we can have somebody pull some string and help us out.
We, we were able.
Congressman Lawenthal.
Absolutely. No, we, we were able to through our efforts of Jones and Mayor to kind of. Get a hold of, 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 of a legal team back in Omaha. We worked with Lucy. She was actually able during COVID, they implemented the, um, DocuSign. To be able to move a lot of the documentation forward a lot quicker. So. We have been successful at that, but inevitably it goes back to the local. This like what they would call the Southwest region of Union Pacific. And we get bogged down with that team. That's why we are really at the point where we need to look for other avenues, which is. Um, and Congressman Lawenthal calls us, like I said, we, I speak to his representative every month. And they always ask about this project because they're excited about it. Um, there's some sensitivity in, in, in. Moving forward with such an aggressive push early on. Cause it, it could backfire, right? But we're at the point where we have proven. Many, many times over that we are here with good intentions and we do everything that they ask. We are compensating Union Pacific for these meetings. We are paying them to ignore us, essentially is what's happening right now. Cause they won't talk to us without a contract. We had to open a contract with UP so that they could talk to us, so that they could then ignore us. So it's very frustrating. I think that's why this summit is, uh, is what I'm hearing is support from council. This is really the. The big push that we need to get this project over the hurdle.
Yeah. What about, um, Michelle Steele's office? Have we ever reached out to that?
I'll just add to this. So because we're, we're, because we are at a point where we, you know, we, we definitely want the blessing from the council to go forward with this more. Aggressive approach. Um, you know, we, we have not reached out yet. However, we are in contact with a representative of. Um, of Michelle Steele's office regularly, as we actually are with, um, with all of our local. Um, our local elected, um, officials offices. We do keep in contact with them. Um, so they are, they are aware of this project. They've been aware of this project. Uh, some of the offices more so than others because of. Um, you know, their vested interest in, in, you know, in this particular project. Um, but we, uh, you know, with obviously this council's blessing, uh, we will definitely move forward with this, uh, with this collaborative effort, uh, to push Union Pacific.
So do you need a motion or agenda that or?
We, we will require the direction from council. Yes.
I will move to, as recommended.
Well, uh, move, uh, yeah, with including the. With the more aggressive approach of this summit that we're speaking of. No second that.
So the right, so the recommendation for tonight obviously is to, um, the recommended action of. You know, authorizing for the allocation of the 1.5 million, but in addition to that. Um, if council wishes, then your motion would be to direct staff to move forward with, um, you know, with a summit and, uh.
Yes.
Pursuing the.
Second that.
Yes.
Includes up, uh, executing an agreement as well. Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have the motion and, uh, second, uh, to prove this item as recommended.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, and that includes to direct staff to move forward with the summit. To authorize the interim center, city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. And to allocate 1.5 million dollars for the grant-funded Mendez Freedom Trail Project from the Street Improvement Grant Fund. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Right, uh, next item, we're to 3.6, City Westminster Graham Statistics. So may I have that report? Oh, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
The, at the request of council, that, uh, we pull these statistics in three-month increments and continue to report to, to council. And the three months statistics are what you have in front of you. Um, I would add that coming out of COVID in 2021, uh, the numbers are probably a little skewed, but, uh, the numbers are, are. More realistic, uh, year to date. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have on this topic.
Uh, yes, uh, the reason I pull this one is because, uh, I believe that. Uh, six minutes ago, I asked for the statisticary report from previous, uh. Um, Chief. So, you know, first of all, I would like to thank, uh, staff and, and Chief for having this report here. Um, and, um. Because the reason I asked for this is because I would like to have an update of what's going on, uh, with our, you know, the situation with our city. For many reasons, different, for many different reasons. One is because of COVID. Uh, number two is because of the short of staff that we have from, from WPD. I know that. Uh, also that, uh, there's another reason is change of management, you know, which is from the previous interim chief and, and now you. What I'm seeing here is the, for all the items that you listed here for all the, um, reason. Uh, there's only one, uh, that's coming down, which is rape, that going down to thirty-three, minus thirty-three percent and the rest of them are up. And there are some of them like seventy-seven percent, sixty-seven percent. Uh, you know, this is a concern. You know, of what's happening. Um, my question is to you is that, uh. Well, what are we, uh, planning to do? Do we have a plan set, uh, set up already or, you know, uh, for the next, uh, month or so? What, what are we going to do? Do we have any plan in place?
So right now with the staffing levels of the Westminster Police Department. So right now with the staffing levels of the Westminster Police Department, and I did send a report to council a few months ago on the staffing uh, compared to um, other agencies, our size, actually, they're all a little smaller. Um, but had more staffing and compared, at least with one of those agencies, our violent crime compared to those, and ours was greater. Um, we just do not have the staffing to do that much proactive uh, enforcement on a lot of these. Um, right now, uh, staff is just busy uh, covering for shortages in areas. Our uh, uh, our detective unit is short and down hundreds of cases that they have to investigate. Um, and I'm not going to just say it's it's Westminster Police Department. There is a shortage of police officers uh, throughout the United States right now. Um, uh, we we do seem to be a little shorter than that com- with the comparison. I did send to council a few months ago. Um, but with that said, it is very difficult. Uh, one may say, hey, can you do it if the officers work overtime? Well, they, a- as you also know, they they are working overtime just to cover patrol functions, which is our foundation. So at the end of the day, as chief, I have to make sure that when any of you or any of your constituents picks up that telephone at 3:00 AM and goes, oh, my God, somebody is breaking into my house right now. They're at the sliding glass door. And then that phone line goes dead. That there's a police officer that's well-trained, knows how to get there, knows what to do when they get there, that responds and gets there very quickly. So that's our number one priority. Getting ahead of the crime and doing proactive things, a little more difficult for us because we'd have to move resources away from the foundation I just described. Now, that said, we are doing some things when we can. Just this morning, uh, our police detectives, police officers and our SWAT team hit a slap house. Uh, and we are seeing increases in crimes uh, around and uh, within slap house locations. Uh, so we did actually hit one uh, this morning and arrested, I believe, eight individuals from that slap house. Um, so we are doing measures, but I wish we can do more of it. I just don't have the staffing to do it. And we do have, I I want to point out, um, one of our policies. Uh, we have men and women um, and others running around out there with uh, a lot of authority. They carry guns and they need sleep. Um, and it's very dangerous to have a police officer out there. And and I know, you know, at least one council member realizes that. I I I can't overwork them. And we do have a policy where it does prohibit me from working them more than a certain amount of hours a day unless there's an absolute emergency, like we have a bigger earthquake. We have a plane crash. We have a derailment of a train or something like that. Barring that, I can't do it. Even though they're willing and and our professionals will give just a tremendous amount to make sure Westminster is safe. I can't push them to that level and it and it's not wise for me to do that because of the important work they do.
Understand. And despite of our short of uh, staff, um, I know that from what I'm hearing right now, you are doing what you can and trying your best to do to cover it. Uh, but uh, and due to the shortage of, you know, of the staff, you know, not here, uh, not even, not only Westminster, but everywhere. Do you have any success in getting uh, more officers planning to come in or you you still have a problem?
We are, we are aggressively, and it's one of our top priorities actually, uh, is recruitment and retention. Um, the retention part is something I know that council is is talking about in forms of of compensation and and things that keep people from going to other agencies, neighboring agencies that have benefit packages that pay a a great deal more. Um, on top of that, though, uh, we are moving forward. We are trying to attract other officers. Um, in my career, this has been the toughest time in with recruitment challenges. We have officers that, you know, are being recruited away from other departments that go, but you'll make this amount. And by the way, we know about your sta- staffing shortage, shortage, shortages and mandates at Westminster Police Department. We don't have that here. So it is attractive for some uh, and and my uh, my heart goes out to the men and women and others that have stayed here uh, and worked through it. Um, and and really believe in the Westminster Police Department and the city of Westminster and and are staying here for it because that is very attractive when you can go elsewhere, make a little more money and not work as hard. And when you look at the hours they're working, um, and and unlike my generation, maybe, maybe even some of your generations, you know, I, uh, over time was like, ooh, overtime, I'll, I can pay more bills or buy more toys or, you know, this generation likes their time off. And and I commend them for that. You know, all of us always tell, hey, spend more time with your family and that guy. Well, they do. They want to. Um, so to go get paid more money elsewhere to do less would attract a lot of people. But even with that, we do have some stable police officers here. They're staying and trying to make the city a safer place. Um, we uh, are trying to better that position. The city manager and HR director are trying to, uh, I know they're working with you and they're trying to to better that situation. We are passing that along to our staff uh, in hopes that they don't leave. We are trying to pass that message along to potential recruits. Um, we have, I believe, a half dozen uh, in background right now uh, that are slated to start the academy in July. Yes, thank you, in July. Um, so we are moving forward uh, slowly, inching. Yes, um, I wish I could report something more positive, uh, but those are the the facts. Uh, and we put a recruitment team together a few months after I started. Um, it's actually a large recruitment team. Uh, a lot of Vietnamese-speaking officers are on that recruitment team to try to go into our community and get some homegrown officers that are bilingual and uh, and can, you know, come into our ranks. Um, and we're, we've been sending them to different events. Uh, but again, we're the, we're not the only ones in the area that are recruiting them. So.
Again, thank you very much for your uh, you know, dedication, the hard work and uh, to uh, WPDs as well as the staff for doing the best that you can right now. You know, it's the fully understand the report that you you just made.
Okay.
Chief, I have a question. Uh, um, where are you on with the mandates right now? Like, I mean, you're at, like, you're at your maximum with with mandates for, I know where officers are working a lot of mandates, but I mean, where are you and what's the maximum?
So uh, I'm happy to report and and maybe it'll be ending on a positive here. We have have crushed the mandates. Uh, in in the time I've been here, we went from several mandates a week. I'm probably being conservative on that estimate to just a few. Do we still have them? Yes. Do I still get daily complaints on them? No, I don't even get weekly complaints. They are way down. Oh, they're still there, but they are way down.
Is that because, um, is I know that when the, when I spoke to you a while back ago, there were, uh, so what what's the the status of why they're going down? What's the report?
So we did have a number of uh, officers that were in training. And once we hire somebody, if they've already graduated from the six-month academy, they spend nearly another six months in a field training program where we can't count them in those minimum numbers because they're with another officer learning the job. A lot of those officers that were in training are now out. So those numbers have have came up a lot.
Okay, that's right. So in essence, you're saying that funding is extremely important.
Yes.
And we need more fun, more of it.
And and other cities understand that and and that that's where we're getting into these battles and and there's basically a recruitment uh, war going on for for viable candidates for police officer. So it's a good time to want to be a police officer.
Understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
With that, I move to approve item three point six. Second.
All right, we have the motion and uh, second to approve this item uh, as recommended.
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't get who made the motion and the second.
I did make the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, and I did the second.
Okay. Thank you. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo to receive and file the City of Westminster Crime Statistics. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Thao?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Next item by monthly status update, a preview of uh, city policy.
Um, I just had a, the reason I pulled this, I had a question. Um, I know we're going over all these different policies. Um, and I know that, I think, I don't know if it's come to us yet, or I think we got a report on the that we're on the, on a strategic plan about retention and training of our uh, staff. My question is, what about, do I have, because I don't see one, the policy on a hiring policy. Um, because I think we need to really get one going because that, I know in in the past, there has been some uh, positions that that weren't, that weren't flown. Uh, are we working on a policy that there? Even though I know since you're, since you've been on the job, it's, you know, it's been a lot better. But I know back in the past, there hasn't really been a policy, or at least haven't seen one that where it says that when a position is open, you have, must be flown. Is, do we have a policy like that? And if we don't, we need to start one, get one going.
So general, so I don't, I haven't seen a policy, but there's generally best practices that go along with the hiring process. Um, I know, I, you know, as far as police department hiring policy, they have, they have a separate process, but like for the rest, um, the rest of the positions, there's generally, there are generally different ways that you can, and these are just best practices. For example, you know, some, depending on an organization, um, it can go as an internal recruitment, but there still needs to be a recruitment process. You know, for others, you go for an outside recruitment. It, you know, it, again, it depends on what the circumstances are. Um, as of right now, the way that the positions are being flown out is everyone has to go through an application process, whether it's a part-time or a full-time position. Um, you know, we, we certainly, uh, we're certainly incorporating that as a regular practice. But as far as a written policy, we don't necessarily have one as of yet. Um, but that is what we're doing. We're actually putting uh, people through through a structured interview process, a panel interview, you know, um, for their first uh, for their first interview and then obviously second interview.
But my concern is, I mean, well, how, if it's not, there's not a written policy, what's, what guarantees that that this is going to happen when, if you or I or none of us are here in the future? So we need to have this, it needs to be down on paper. This is the policy and this, it must be followed.
Well, looking, I I guess I would say, looking maybe twenty years down the line, if we're just throwing out a hypothetical number, some of these positions could warrant, um, you know, uh, it it would, it would warrant, again, uh, maybe a different um, a different process for it. So like, you know, in larger organizations, I'm, and I'm being hopeful that in twenty years, we will have a much better, you know, a much larger um, organization, more structured organization where you can afford, you you can have um, an opportunity for internal promotions because you certainly want to be able to give opportunities for those who are vested in your organization um, to move up. So I would say that putting um, the putting a a hard, a hard policy, um, you know, down for this is what you must do for every position may be restrictive. Um, but we can certainly, we can certainly develop some guidelines that would, um, that would at least, you know, provide direction for the hiring process. And we can certainly do that. Like I, you know, like I say at this point, you know, in the past with part-time positions, they went through an application process, didn't go through an interview. Um, that has since changed. Um, every part-timer or full-timer has to go through an interview process, has to submit an application, has to, you know, has to do certain things, has to um, sign a, you know, sign the code of ethics, has to go through, you know, definitely a lot more um, screening than, you know, what was once put before.
Yes, and I would like to, I think that's, I would like to see that have those guidelines be in place. Because I think it's, we can't just bank on that somebody's going to want to do the right thing because it's the the moral thing to do, is the ethical thing to do. And you can't bank on that.
The hope, right?
Yeah, so that's, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Forward.
One uh, question, please. Okay, so we 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 talk about, you know, implement policy and do away from best practice, right? Okay, the so-called best practice is pretty much like no policy at all. So uh, that's into direction of the city. Um, you mentioned that the uh, the PD have their own HR. Is anybody oversee the the PD HR or they a a separate entity?
H, so HR is HR. HR is HR altogether. PD does not have a separate human resources. They are ultimately working in conjunction with our HR department.
Okay, so the, so we have somebody that working together at the separate entity?
No, there there, there is no separate entity.
Thank you.
You said that PD has their own hiring policy.
So they, because the way that you hire a police officer or PD personnel, it's different than the way that you hire the rest of us.
Yes.
So if if the chief wants to elaborate on what that looks like.
Happy to. We have a a professional standards unit. In fact, commander, the professional standards unit is here tonight. They work closely in conjunction with HR, but they're able to do some of the heavy lifting when it comes to recruiting, like they want to hear, they don't. Generally, somebody becoming a police officer, getting out of the academy, they want to hear from fellow police officers. Uh, so we we supply that. We handle the uh, a large part of the hiring process in conjunction with HR because there's standards from uh, California Police Officer Standards and Training, which is a state entity that has those guidelines that we have to pl- uh, obey by in the hiring process, such as a background, a polygraph, a structured interview. Um, so w- we we handle a lot of that uh, component. But it is overseen by HR and there's always HR-related questions that come up. Uh, they help us during the interview process as well. Um, so it's a, it's a team effort. But so uh, the city manager is 100% correct. We don't have our own HR. But we have a unit that basically works very tight with them in in going after and recruiting potential uh, staff members.
Thank you. I understand. Yeah, so yeah, like I said before, I would like to see those guidelines because, yeah, we can, but we can't just hope that people are doing the right thing. So thank you. Well, I, I'd like to um, motion to approve three point seven.
Second.
Even file.
All right, we have the motion and uh, second uh, to approve as recommended.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Doe. To receive and file um, this report, three point seven by monthly status update of review of city policy. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Count, Councilmember Ho? Briefly stepped away. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Yes.
Four zero with uh, Councilmember Ho being currently absent from the vote.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we have uh, public hearing and I have to recuse myself because properly in the staff report of the public hearing is really close to where I live. So I may ask the vice mayor, so vice mayor, please.
Yes.
Really appreciate that.
Right, you're welcome, Mayor. So next we have a public hearing and resolution to determine and declare a public nuisance and conduct weed abatement for spring of 2020. Uh, staff report, please.
If I may just briefly read into the record, um, the item on public hearings.
Yes, oh, that's right, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is that, um, anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing item uh, currently may speak in person or via Zoom. Speakers um, during the public hearing comments will each have five minutes to speak on each public hearing item. Any person wishing to address the council in person should complete a green speaker card that is provided um, to you. And when your name is called, please come forward to the podium. And at that time, uh, we will provide you with the uh, begin, um, the five-minute clock. Any person wishing to address the city council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you're using telephone or have dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand. When your name is called, I will enable your microphone and you may begin to speak once you unmute yourself. Um, if you're calling from a telephone or cellphone, press star six on your dial pad to mute and unmute. And at that time, um, you may begin speaking. If can, please. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now, uh, Director No, please staff report.
Absolutely. Good evening, Vice Mayors, um, council members. So this is the public hearing and the resolution to determine the um, and declare the public nuisance. So this is the public hearing and the resolution to determine the, and declare the public nuisance and conduct weed abatement program for spring two thousand twenty-two. Currently, we have eighteen vacant properties in the city on the weed abatement list. In March of this year.
Sorry, we currently lost a quorum.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum.
So, we need to take a recess, Vice Mayor, because we lost our quorum.
We got one back.
It's okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. So, yeah, so currently, we have eighteen vacant properties in the cities on this list. So in March of this year, staff sent out an early notice, reminded properties owner to clean theirs. And then it will be inspected by city staff on April first. So at the time that we inspected, out of eighteen properties, there's ten properties was non-compliant. And, but we continue reaching out to those properties owners and, and advise them with a date. So as of yesterday, we inspected those property again, and there's only four that are non-compliant, so. And, and again, we continue that effort to reach out to them and advise them with a date. Right now, the property owner, the four property owner have until May fifth to clean theirs. After May fifth, and on May nine, city staff will move on and move in and, and start abandoning those properties. So each year, I just wanna touch base on how this program been managed. So each year, staff bringing the weed abatement program to the city council in spring and fall. The other two quarter, we just sent out the notices to remind the property owners to clean theirs. If they're not even complying, we work closely with CPU to start issue the notice of violations. So that conclude my staff report.
Well, that, that was, oh, thank you for your staff report. That was a question I had, is, so you're, you are contacting them more often than just the two times a month, a year, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, because I think that's been brought up before, as far as doing it more frequently. Because by the time, and I've seen this, by the time, you know, all this goes down and it comes to counts, I mean, it's, the weeds will just be, go right back up again, so. So, so we're doing it, contacting them more frequently. That's the goal. That's, I think we should be doing that.
That's, not without officially bringing to the council, but staff continuously send out notices and letters. And actually, when we reach to them and they're not responding to us, we actually asking CPU to step in and help. So, you know, that's one of the case that we couldn't get any responses from one of the property owner, and actually, when CPU send them the notice, they actually responded.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? All right. I would like to open public hearing at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item at this time? Vice Mayor, there are none in the public and none on Zoom raising their hand at this time.
All right, thank you. With that being the case, a closed public hearing and any comments from council or motion, like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second to motion? Yeah, motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Doe, second by myself.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I apologize. I thought we had lost our quorum again. I apologize for that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. And that is to overrule any objections received at the public hearing for the abatement of weeds and adopt resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor, city council of the city of Westminster determining and declaring that certain weeds are growing upon certain streets, sidewalks, parkways, and private properties in the city of Westminster. And rubbish and refuse have been deposited upon sidewalks, parkways, and private property in the city, and that same are public nuisance. Ordering and directing the N M city manager to have said weeds destroyed and to have rubbish and refuse removed as required by law. And that includes the update of that Exhibit A attached.
Correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Motion carries three, three zero zero with Mayor Ta recusing himself.
Thank you. Do we wanna call Mayor back in here? No, there he comes. You're welcome. Now it's my turn.
All right, I guess we have a quorum. So I like, I like to continue our agenda. Regular basis, five point one, review of CityNet contract and alternative to case management for homeless support services.
Good evening, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Monzo, and City Council. First off, I'd like to start by saying how much the Westminster Police Department appreciates everything CityNet has done for us in the past, since our working partnership began in two thousand seventeen. They assisted us greatly in getting our homeless outreach program off the ground. And we have had some successful outcomes together. I have spent a lot of time working out in the field with our homeless liaison officers and speaking with our homeless neighbors out in the field. Is my personal recommendation and opinion that we move, start moving towards this is more self-sufficient in-house Westminster-specific approach to case management. And this can be accomplished by the implementation of a full-time community outreach coordinator. This position would serve as a liaison for assigned clientele and will be available forty hours a week to provide resources and assistance, not only to our police officers, but our homeless liaison officers, our homeless neighbors, and our community. The addition of a full-time community outreach officer would allow us to provide council with our own monthly statistical reports, which you all have requested several times, and that CityNet has been unable to provide to this day. CityNet has not only been unable to fulfill their contractual obligations in regards to their statistical reports, but also to their monthly hours. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Westminster Police Department that we terminate the contract with CityNet and implement the full-time position of a community outreach coordinator.
Reading the police report, you know, I mean, the staff report, and also hearing from what you're saying and previous discussion from last meeting. I can see that surely we have a problem. And also that I see that WPD and staff is well-prepared to take the next step. So I move to terminate the CityNet contract and creating a full-time community outreach coordinator position. I would second that, but I have a question. I think on your, I was stepped out for a minute. I'm thinking your report, you mentioned that one or two full-time positions, is that was the case?
Just currently filled a part-time position. That person will be starting in the middle of May.
Okay.
My recommendation is that we create a full-time position to also supplement that.
Okay, just the one. All right, thank you.
All right, I thank you so much for your report. So we have the motion and second on the floor to terminate agreement with CityNet and add one full-time position for our PD.
I am in support of that. May I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. I think back in two thousand sixteen, I did not like the idea of having CityNet, but it served us. CityNet did service for the time being up until now. And I would say we're just kinda long overdue to find a full-time, a more committed coordinator. Was it community outreach coordinator is the title of that person, and and that person will be held accountable. I think that it, you know, it makes a whole lot of sense, you know, to transition to a full-time person. So I'm, I'm totally in support of that. I just think that if we could have, from the get-go, if we could like figure out what kind of reporting, what kind of parameters, how we're gonna measure our success, so that we could show for, for this extra, I guess, extra commitment financially as well, as you know, in addition, an extra person, a full-time. So I'm, I'm totally in support of that, especially when we here's something I know, is that seven thousand five hundred back then, I think that was two thousand sixteen, seventeen, when we retained CityNet. That was very, I think that's when they first started out. And they're committed to, what, thirty-six hours a month? That comes to about five hours a day, I believe, and two, two part-time employees, correct? And when I read the contract, it's not, we read it today or for, for this meeting, I think it's, it's not necessarily things that they're, they are doing for us directly, but that also includes like things that they do for us indirectly. Meaning, you know, so that's just gotta remember that it may not be necessarily for, for the homeless, not necessarily to take care of the homeless with the five hours, but that, that includes like, indirectly would include like paperwork, et cetera. So I know that the city of Fountain Valley has just retained them. And I believe in today's dollars, I see a contract of fifteen thousand dollars a month, so I, I see that they're, I can see why they're not serving us well, you know, and we do have a thirty-day. What is it, if we wanna cancel, we just give them thirty days' notice? So I think at this time, I would, I think it's, we, we gotta think of ourselves, of our city, and move forward. Because they're not, I think they're kinda breaching the contract, since they're not, you know, supplying us with the, with that second person, and it's been a while now. At least, what, a month or two months, or? Two months. Yeah. So I make a motion to, to do that, give them thirty-day notice, cancel their contract, and move, move along with hiring the full-time community outreach coordinator.
It's two part-time, right? Two part-time.
Is that a full-time or two?
One.
One full-time, am I correct?
One full-time. We already have the part-time.
Yeah, there's a motion already on the floor, but it, so previously for last year's budget, it was already approved to have two part-timers. And so that was part of last year's budget adoption, so that's already accounted for. This would be for the creation of a full-time, and we're gonna offset costs, you know, with, with what CityNet.
So may I ask you, so before, we already have one full-time a police officer, right?
Okay, so, so you have, so you have two different, you have two different, you know, roles here. So you have the homeless liaison officers, in which we have two, and then the community outreach worker, which is what would ultimately be, what, you know, equivalent to someone with CityNet. Because the whole goal at some point was to phase out of CityNet and become self-sustaining with our efforts. And so that was, that was the goal of approving the two part-time positions in the last budget. You know, but as we mentioned, that it's been hard to, to attract and retain, you know, certain positions, especially since this role is very competitive out there. Everyone's trying to tackle with homeless issues. So at this point, with CityNet lacking in the area of being able to provide us the service that we're, you know, that we're expecting, and dedicating the amount of hours, at this point, you know, with the recommendation of having a full-time that would be dedicated to the city, that would be the ideal situation. And so in, you know, at the next meeting, we would have to come back with the salary schedule for the full-time position. So, you know, this is direction for us to move forward, and next, you know, at the next meeting, we would have to come back with a resolution for this position.
Correct. Question real quick. Would this full-time position, the salary can be paid by grand later when we have an opportunity to receive a grant that, that for homeless spending?
I looked in, I tried to look into this with staff at some point.
That possible?
Maybe.
Possibility?
It's a maybe, depending on what the, it's a maybe. I, I had asked, I had, I had asked staff about the possibility of, of it being partially funded through grants, but that would be something at a future date to, you know, to look at. So as of right now, it would be from, you know, from our, from what would be the CityNet costs to offset, as well as, you know, other, you know, other salaries that we would look in the general fund.
So the hundred thirteen thousand five hundred per year, that's a loaded cost, right? Include benefits and?
Yes, that's a fully burdened cost.
Well, I just wanna take this opportunity and thanks CityNet for their past service, so, but time has changed. We need to move on and be sufficient and have an in-house communities outreach coordinator, so, thank you.
All right, so we have the motion and a second on the floor to approve. Yes, as recommended by council members.
So the motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, to terminate the contract with CityNet and create a full-time position as community outreach. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, ma'am.
All right, so item five point two, addition of a full-time animal control officer position.
Approved.
Second.
Have the motion and second to approve this item?
I have a question before we vote. That'd be chief, chief there? Lenny? Oh.
Really making your, your keep today.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so I just wanna make sure, it says here, I don't know if I should be asking staff who wrote up the, the report, or is it chief?
You, you can ask me, and if I don't have the answer, I will get the right person.
All right, so, it says here, city staff feel that a current staffing is sufficient to serve, to service the city of Westminster. But that additional staffing may be appropriate to meet the additional contractual obligations in the city of Stanton. So I know you're meeting, so you've got, okay, you've got the service part, and then you've got the contractual part. Are you trying to meet the contract, or are you trying to?
We're, we're trying to meet both, ma'am.
Both. So you feel like you, you need the full-time person to meet the service as well? Yes, okay. Okay, so, you know, I, I don't know, when, you know, of course, I was, today I reached out to Mayor Dave Schauer. And I spoke to him about that, and I was just, you know, I kind of read it as initially, I thought, you know, it meets the service without the one full-time person that we're lacking. But you're saying that you, you need that person, right? So he said that, well, he wants to compliment us, you, for the, the service for the last three, four years. He said he's never heard a peep or a complaint out of the, his people of Stanton.
In a state, in, in a sentence, our animal control service staff rock.
They do. And he said, however, they could be more proactive, because he said he hasn't seen. Because he said he hasn't seen, um, any animal control trucks or whatever. And so he said he likes to see that, he used to see that. So I'm not sure what it takes to be proactive, but if you could pass that along, um, that would be.
I can, and he definitely will see that with the, uh, passing of this agenda report.
Okay, okay. And then the other thing that, that was interesting is, you know, I explained to him that we're short one full-time person, and it's good that he hasn't heard any complaints. And then he said that if there is a pay increase, you know, perhaps, um, uh, we could ask our city staff to reach out to them and they could share the cost. And, you know, because I, I talked to him about this agenda and he said, you know, I think if, if there's a, a, um, pay increase and trying to get someone good, you know, reach out to us and we could share and prorate or, you know, uh, share in that cost increase. So why not?
Definitely will be doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor, right? Okay?
So I would like to, you know, maybe make a substitute motion to approve that, but just to have staff reach out to, um, to City of Stanton and see how it can work out. Or if they wanna offer, why not?
Just to?
To help with the cost?
Regional maker, the motion, you wanna add that?
Um.
Sure.
So let me understand something. So the, the mayor of, uh, of Stanton, um, make a comment that he willing to share the cost?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we?
So reach out to the city manager of Stanton and?
Okay, so, and, and what happened when the city staff reached out to the mayor of Stanton and that not gonna happen?
And we?
Counselor not approved and then, and what, the staff have to bring back to the council and?
What do you guys wanna do?
I think it's just a matter of just reaching out to them and, and, and pursuing that. Doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that, um, you gotta be, bring it back to us. It's just making the effort of pursuing that.
Okay, you understand what I mean, right?
Yeah.
Because I don't think the mayor individually can approve that.
Correct, yeah.
Spending, is that, is that correct? So he had to bring it up?
Right, he said, um, he was gonna talk to his city, uh, manager and he says, city manager just wouldn't, he and his, he doesn't think that he, well, at least he is speaking for himself that he wouldn't mind paying for that and he's gonna tell his city manager. So I just think it's worth reaching out to him. And it takes, it's gonna take time for us to find someone anyway, so.
Okay, so if the, the mayor and the council of Stanton, uh, refuse to participate or share the cost and then we allow the, the city staff to move forward without having to come back?
Yeah, we could do that.
So I, I would, I would say this, this, we're, we're kind of negotiating our own contract here. So I, I would say that this is not the best place for this conversation, but, but ultimately, ultimately, ultimately for? I mean, ultimately, um, you know, the, the cost of the contract and what Stanton is paying for us is for the business that we're providing or the services that we're providing. And so, um, so whatever that factors in, if at some point in the future, if costs have gone up, that's where we would be discussing this contract with Stanton.
Right.
Um, so, so I would say the motion as it stands would probably be, um,
Good.
The, the, good enough for the time being, but of course, um.
City manager, if I may too.
Sure.
Just a little bit more information to help this, the council make their decision is, uh, the, the contract expires in two years, but in the contract are annual increases. So we are, we are actually getting those at a rate of five percent a year. Um, but, and, and we would negotiate that in if they still want our services at the end of two years. And I, I would think with the feedback that Councilmember Ho received, they probably would want our services indefinitely. But those are really already built in.
Okay, great.
No need for it.
Okay, so I'm fine. No, that's, that's all right.
Okay.
Thank, that's right. Thank you.
All right, so we have the motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the motion was made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, and that is to approve the addition of a full-time position of animal control officer and approve budget appropriation in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred to the police department, animal control salaries budget for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Tong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Item, uh, six point one, introduce the first reading of an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, establishing, uh, military equipment policy to govern the use of, uh, military equipment.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we have the motion and the second as recommended.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen and seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. Um, and that is to introduce and conduct first reading of ordinance entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, establishing a military equipment policy for the city of Westminster, California, governing the use of military equipment. Um, and, and this is to be read by title only and waiting for the reading at this time. Councilmember Doe? You just left. Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Tong?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries four zero with Councilmember Doe currently stepping away from the debate.
Next item, six point two, request for ordinance making it illegal to possess and uninstall catalytic converter without proof of ownership. I didn't see this.
So, yes.
I don't, yeah, that's missing from my.
So we, we just discovered, like in the last hour, that six point two was not included in your packets physically. But we do have copies available and we can, we can.
So explain to us what it's not about and is that for other cities?
So, so, so staff presentation. Uh, so this was a request from Councilmember Doe, um, in which, uh, in which he's, uh, requested for staff to look into, um, an ordinance that would make it illegal to possess an uninstalled catalytic converter without proof of ownership. So there, um, the number of thefts, uh, related to catalytic converters have increased, um, just overall, you know, within our city, within the county, nationwide. People are taking these catalytic converters and, um, you know, uh, taking them to, to scrap metal yards and, and, you know, it, they contain a lot of metals that, you know, generate a lot of money. And so unfortunately, um, you know, the, the, the number has increased substantially. Um, like, for example, in Westminster, it's gone from two thousand, in two thousand eighteen, there were eighteen thefts and that jumped to one hundred and thirty-two in twenty twenty and then three hundred and one in twenty twenty-one. And so, um, the staff report does show a listing of what, uh, some of the, uh, some of the, um, you know, the theft numbers look like, uh, year-to-date, or actually for first quarter of twenty twenty-two. And I apologize, Councilmember Doe, this is your item, but since we all did not get the staff report, I'm just gonna go through it. But for example, in Anaheim, you know, as of, uh, the first three months of this year, they've reported a hundred and forty-four, Brea fifty-one, Buena Park forty-five, Costa Mesa eighty-five, Fountain Valley fifty-nine, our wonderful neighbors in Garden Grove, one hundred and sixty-six, Huntington Beach one fifty, Irvine one sixty-four, um, La Habra twenty-five, and the sheriff's department, which, you know, uh, basically all the unincorporated South County, County cities, two hundred and sixty-one. And then, uh, for us, eighty-three, just in the first three months of this year. So, um, the number, you know, the number is, uh, has increased. So, um, you know, there are cities in Orange County that have adopted, uh, an ordinance that would, uh, that would, um, define what a catalytic converter theft is and what would be requirements for, uh, for proof of, of possession. And so, um, I had attached Huntington Beach, Irvine, Lake Forest, and Mission Viejo's ordinances. And so at this point, um, you know, Councilmember Doe can, can explain why this is near and dear to him. And, um, if council chooses to proceed with moving forward with an ordinance, then direction has to be provided for staff to come back with a draft ordinance, um, for first and second reading. And then, of course, uh, define what some of the parameters would be within that ordinance.
Well.
Thank you. Doe, can you, um, as you're doing, sorry to interrupt, can you, um, as you're processing, can you address the issues that, um, Resident Roger Mendrum?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, about Pino Code and the difference and all that, for sure.
Um, you know what, I'm, I, I was a victim of the catalytic converter theft, uh, stuff a few years ago, happened in Bellatera. Go and did my one-hour hot yoga, come back out, start up my Toyota truck, and you know what? Without the muff, I mean, the catalytic converter, it sound like a race car, you know? And, uh, I came out and the catalytic converter was missing. You know, it's a couple bolts and we remove and it's gone. So, uh, there was a security guard, uh, in, uh, in Bellatera, uh, saw the suspect remove my catalytic converter, uh, got a license plate, so they already called the, uh, Huntington Beach Police, come out and took a report, so, but I never heard anything, uh, from the Huntington Beach PD, so. Anyway, that's, the, the reason I would like to, uh, add, um, the, uh, disinto the city ordinance, because right now, uh, there's no state law that's, uh, prohibited the possession of, uh, of, uh, the catalytic converter, except the Business and Professional Code, um, twenty-one, six, ten. Uh, basically just mandated all the recycling center to, um, keep records of, uh, the people who sells and buy it, and that's it. Um, there's a few SB Senate bill, like nine eighty-six, ten eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-four, that's in the work and we don't know when it's gonna be, become law. So, um, um, you know, when, when we have this, it becomes city ordinance, it's illegal for, uh, people who, uh, to possess the, uh, catalytic converter. I give the police officer reasonable, uh, cause to stop and arrest these people and prosecute these people and hopefully that will stop the, uh, wave of catalytic converter theft, you know? You know, I remember I had to spend four hundred dollars to get, um, uh, aftermarket catalytic converter. And the problem with that, I couldn't wait for the claim with insurance and all that stuff because, uh, the dealer park was like several thousand dollars. But then, uh, I had to experience the problem with aftermarket parts. Uh, it couldn't pass smock check. And it, it, the, and the computer have to, you have to drive the vehicles, uh, how many thousand miles for the computer to reset? Because it's just a, it's just, uh, stop people from bypassing the, uh, smock, uh, um, check. So for two year, I couldn't pass a smock check. So, uh, and until I, you know, have to place a bunch of parts and finally it works and it's over truck, but so I, I, I like it till, um, you, you know, right now there's not, if you stop a person with a catalytic converter in possession, uh, that's a whole lot to think that, uh, the police officer can do unless they can prove it's a stolen property, so. And that is the reason why we need to have, and a lot of cities start, uh, implementing this, uh, incorporating to their, uh, city ordinance. And I don't think that's a, that's a city ordinance, you can, it can be a felony, right? It's a, always.
No, it, it would be a misdemeanor.
Yeah.
But you're, you're right that cities, they're trying to, trying to do what they can to try and stop it because nothing's been done at the state level yet.
Uh, hopefully, there's, they, they, you know, we're gonna have something in the Pino Code and that will help, uh, the police officer to, um, stop this. But right now, we have to take the matter in our own hand and we, we need to, uh, adopt this city ordinance. Hopefully that was, uh, put a, uh, a plug into this, so.
Can you, uh, address how the, the questions from, um, Resident Mendrum, Roger Mendrum, about the difference between a ordinance and, and, and a Pino Code? Can you arrest somebody with just the ordinance?
Let's see, Charlie, you wanna venture into that deep, man?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about the, I guess it depends on the circumstance, but, uh, arrest them. Misdemeanor is a, a misdemeanor is a much, yeah, felony, it's not a felony. An ordinance is a law. It's a city law here in this, in this instance. But yeah, I suppose if somebody's repeatedly violating it, then you could arrest them. I, I don't know that you'd, you know, they get released, you know, uh, I would think. So, um, it's, it's a minor crime. It's, uh, you know, and what you're trying to do is create a, a, the potential for taking them to court, imposing a fine on them, up to a thousand dollars. And potentially a misdemeanor can be punished up to as much as just under a year. But, um, the question is whether or not that would actually get enforced is another question.
Hmm.
Difficulty of proving these is very difficult. I, this is, um, and, and the chief and I had a discussion about this. It's when they take these off, there's no markings on them, so it's hard to prove that it's not your catalytic converter. So part of what's going on in this ordinance here is to force people to, um, have information proving why they have it in their possession.
Speaking of, speaking of proof, so hot off the press, our PD is actually gonna be doing a catalytic converter etching, um, free event, so we can actually put, so there's usually identification that, you know, that usually the VIN number on the, uh, on the catalytic converter. But that's actually gonna be happening on Saturday, May twenty-first, from eight AM to two PM. It's a free event, it's gonna be over at the corp yard, and that's located at one four three eight one Olive Street. And so, um, you know, that's just gonna be an event. There are other cities that have done this in which they've identified, you know, people can, can come in, takes maybe what, ten minutes or so for, you know, to get your catalytic converter etched and identified. And so there's the proof right there. And then, of course, if you don't know where the corp yard is, you should definitely come up for the, uh, the open house that's happening three days before on the eighteenth, so.
Yes, and that was part of what we discussed earlier this week. And I, it's an important element because if they can put a VIN number or something on there and, uh, an officer pulls someone over and the chief can speak to this, you know, and you've got five catalytic converters in the back and they've all got different VINS and you can now tie that back to a vehicle, it gives them the ability to, to bring a felony charge against them. Maybe you could speak to that?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, eh, with etching on the catalytic converters, the officer now can run the number on it. It's basically serialized and they can convert, confirm that it is a stolen item. They can arrest the person now on a felony. I'm actually hoping it detours, and there's no statistics on this because you, there's nothing to report on because the person just doesn't steal the item. But oftentimes, and we have arrested a number of catalytic converter thieves, almost all of them have had flashlights or some type of lighting device. So they're looking, they have to unscrew things, um, they would see the etchings on there and now it makes it more difficult for them to sell because it's traceable and they may go to the next car. So, uh, we're, we're going to push, do it a very aggressive campaign on social media, pushing this out and trying to get Westminster residents to do this, hoping our catalytic converter thefts go down, especially amongst council members.
But you know, but they, you know, everybody trying to, uh, uh, curb this way of, uh, crimes and as a, as a, as a council, uh, we, I, I strongly, um, recommend that we need to adopt this municipal code that will give the police officer tool to, uh, stop and, uh, um, arrest people for unlawful possession of, uh, catalytic converters. You know, like, I, I would like to read a couple of the, uh, municipal code. This one, uh, what city is this? City of Lake Forest. Lake Forest is pretty much run by the Orange County Patrol, by the Orange County Sheriff. Uh, section eleven point two, four point zero, uh, four zero. Unlawful possession of catalytic, uh, converter prohibited. Section eight. It shall be unlawful to possess any catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle unless the possessor has a valid documentation or other proof to verify that they are in lawful possession of a catalytic, uh, converter. Section B, um, for purpose of, uh, this section, lawful possessing include, one, being the lawful owner of the catalytic converter. Number two, in possession of a catalytic, uh, catalytic converter with the lawful almost written consent. It's not required to prove that the catalytic converter was stolen to establish possession. That is not, uh, lawful possession. Right now, police officer have to establish that element. That is not a lawful possession, um, right now, police officers have to establish that element, um, um, stolen, and it's extremely difficult to to establish the element right now, uh, just a mere possession could be uh, unlawful. Does that make sense? Okay, I I can continue to read, uh, these, this appear to be pretty good municipal code that we can, uh, I don't know if we can uh, cut and paste it, or is there a process of doing that?
Yes, if the council wants us to, I can come back at the next meeting with looking at these and putting one of these together, maybe the Lake Forest one, and essentially use same language, a lot of them are using very similar language.
So you know, if anyone uh, got caught, to get stopped and found in possession of any catalytic converter in our city, that will give us our police officer ground to uh, make an arrest.
Sounds good. Want to make a motion on that?
Sure, I'd like to uh, make a motion and uh, uh, direct the city attorney office to uh, come back with a uh, city ordinance.
A second.
Hope to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, so we have the motion, and who second motion? Oh, we already have second, okay.
Council member Ho.
Second motion, okay, good.
Well, the motion was made by Councilmember Do, seconded by Councilmember Ho, to direct the city attorney's office to prepare and present an ordinance to the city council at the next meeting. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next, we have commission and committee item, seven point one, city uh, city council appointment to fill vacancy on the city commission and committee. So there is one vacant uh, on the community services and recreation commission. So I'd like to, I'd like to nominate uh, Trisha Trinh Phung Bui.
Take a second there.
All right, we have the motion and uh, a second on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and that motion was made um, by Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen, to appoint Trisha Trinh Phung Bui to the Community Services and Recreation Commission vacancy. Councilmember Do? Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Nguyen? Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, uh, seven point two, request to extend that life for one tree monument committee and community service and recreation committee related to the design and location of the proposed monument. So the city.
Has staff report?
Staff report, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I'm here tonight beh- on behalf of the Kwong Tree Monument Committee and the Community Services Recreation Commission. Both are requesting extension to their April fourteenth deadlines. Kwong Tree Committee was to finalize the design of the project, including logos, inscriptions, colors, and other design aspects, um, and they were to present that to the city council for the ultimate approval. Community Services and Recreation Commission is tasked with making the location recommendation. And that will be to the city council for approval. The commission met March twenty-eighth and reviewed the proposed architectural plans for the project. They had a lengthy discussion about dimensions, accessibilities, utility needs, um, and other aspects. They passed a motion to defer recommend recommending a location until the Kwong Tree Committee had a chance to meet again, which was scheduled for April fourth. Community Services Commission set their next meeting for the April fourteenth in order to comply with council's deadline, and requested that the monument committee consider scaling down the project, the size of the project. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, the Kwong Tree Monument Committee rescheduled the April fourth meeting to April eleventh, which was then canceled by the committee. They are proposing to meet on May ninth in anticipation of tonight's approval by the council for an extension. In response to that delay, the Community Services and Recreation Commission canceled their meeting scheduled for April fourteenth, and is also requesting an extension and has proposed meeting on May sixteenth. We are requesting that council consider both requests and provide further direction. Beck and I are both here to answer some questions if needed.
What was the, the deadline that we um, recommend on the the March twenty eighth meeting? No, I'm sorry, what was the last?
I think it was March ninth.
March ninth.
And that deadline was April fourteenth.
I have a question, um. Um. You know, we know that, you know, my my concern is uh, when, why was the, one of the meetings canceled because of the absence of one, one committee member? I mean, should that meeting should have just, you you know, that's why you have, you have the chair and vice chair, and you know, as long as you have a quorum, that meeting should continue.
Yes.
You know, do you know why, why did it not happen?
The second meeting, which was canceled, was due to committee members not being able to be present. The first one that was rescheduled, they hadn't gotten a design ready to present, and so they weren't ready to present that, and with that key member of the committee unable to make it to the eleventh, they decided to cancel that meeting.
It wasn't so much that one member was missing, it was just that they weren't ready?
It was a combination of both.
Okay, because, I mean, we need to make sure that we're doing things right, just because as long as there's a quorum, that meeting should continue. Uh, one, even if you're missing um, the chair and vice chair, as long as there's a quorum. And I have no, because I've, it's happened in, in planning commission before. We had the chair and vice chair missing, and we still continued it with the quorum, so.
And we, we would have, if we would have had something to present, at that point, there was still nothing to present to the entire committee.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the same. The same question I have for regarding the Park and Recreation Committee, uh, that I, uh, they have four members.
Correct.
And they're waiting for a fifth, they should not, there should be a quorum, and they should move forward. I don't understand these folks, so when I said deadline was April fourteen, April fourteen.
And they, they understood that, and they were anticipating a Kwong Tree Monument Committee to happen before the deadline, and they scheduled another meeting on the deadline and canceled that since there was nothing more to present, approve from Kwong Tree Monument Committee.
But we didn't ask them to have to, like I said, you know, they're they're two separate things. One is the location, they act independently of each other. The other is the eleven, the main Kwong Tree Monument uh, committee. So do you guys, as Jake and Vanessa, do you guys understand that?
Yes.
Did you communicate that?
Yes, we did, we have discussed in length with them, and with what, what the council direction on it. But with further discussion, the committee, I mean, the commission decided to delay it after.
Okay, you know, this is like, this must be, this is very uncomfortable for me, because it is like, uh, you know, like I said, you know, we try to streamline, do things better, faster, uh, go, you know, doing, going as direct as possible, point A to point B, and that's how you get there the fastest, okay? But this is like going roundabout, and then, you know, excuses after excuses, and uh, it's not streamlining, so I don't know what it is, but at this point, I'm just kind of very upset that it's taking too long, and it seems like, um, I'd have to say, I I I want to say that it, they're showing incompetency here. So I would not extend it. You know, I wanted to come back, and I, you guys, I I don't understand your thoughts about, you know, pushing this on the Park and Recreation, when I feel like they don't want to make that, they have a hard time making decision, so I'd like to take it back and just bring it back to the council. And the council will make that decision uh, with maybe an ad hoc committee of two people coming up with a, you know, with a decision, and then bring it forth to the rest of the council. Because after all, it's just a recommendation. How can it take this long to make, it should be a privilege to be a part of, you know, of this decision-making process. Come on, it is not, uh, it shouldn't take this long, and it shouldn't be so burdensome like that. I didn't, we didn't ask them to wait on the eleven. We told them to go their own, you know, look at their own thing and do their own thing, they should not. And I thought I made it really clear, we made it really clear, and so now this, so I feel like, okay, I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't think this is the way to go, okay? So could we have an ad hoc committee and just make that decision? Uh, let's move forward.
I have questions. So uh, the Community Services and Recreation Commission canceled their meeting on the April fourteen just because the Kwong Tree Monument Committee rescheduled there. They cannot, they cannot make to April eleven, twenty twenty-two.
That's correct.
And due to unforeseen circumstances. Now, we, do we know what unforeseen circumstances? Because to me, they know that they have to get, they have the deadline that they have to work on, and they've been canceled, they've been moving from April four to April eleven, and now they canceled April eleven. So we can't say that that the planning, I mean, uh, Community Service and Recreation Commission Commission didn't do their job, they canceled their meeting, uh, due to um, Kwong Chief Monument Committee rescheduled and couldn't make it to April eleven.
Yes, that was their direction. They, they wanted Kwong Tree Monument Committee to meet one more time before they made a recommendation, and that meeting did not take place.
And my question to you is, due to unforeseen circumstances, what are they?
Um, yes, we were communicated with the vice chairs of the committee, and um, he has some issue with his computer, and also, he's, he's working on the inscription and, you know, the logo. Uh, they also have a death and a family, so he's, he's a key person to move this project forward, trying to get things translated, trying to finalize the monument project. Um, so he wasn't able to meet those deadlines, so he asking if we can extend those deadlines, so he can take care of the issue that he has, and then get this project completed.
Well, I think the the the, asking for extension, like we discussed last time, we agreed that we, you know, if they can, cannot make it, we can, you know, extend the schedule. I don't have any problem with that, but, you know, accusing or telling that the Community Service and Recreation Commission can, you know, uh, cannot make decision and cannot meet to make the decision. And I can, I can assure you that they are canceling, and they said it right here, they canceled due to, because of the Kwong Chief Monument Committees canceled their meeting. Can you confirm that?
That's correct, yes.
But that has nothing to do with the others, I don't understand. I don't understand if I was not heard when I spoke, but I made it really clear that, you know, I said that they, that has nothing to do with, with the Park and Recreation Committee and their ability to perform. So we did not tell them to be the judge of what the eleven people committee have, have to do. So we didn't ask them to look at the work, like the logo or the transcription and all that. I know that when I happened to bump into someone at the uh, of the eleven, and I asked, you know, why was it canceled? And I think the translation was done by, was going to be done by.
Professional translator.
Yes, and that person was not available uh, two or three times, is that correct?
That's what also communicated to us, that they have hard time to have that person to commit it to the deadline.
Who was that person? Was it someone in-house, same person we've been using?
The committee member had reached out to the city staff, and we have provided them with a list of a professional translator, and they are the one who contact with them directly, uh, we don't have that information of who they have contacted with.
Okay.
I have questions, if I.
Yeah, so that part I know is not there.
Thank you, um, the other question that I have is, so we had a deadline of um, when the committee, the committee members needed to uh, complete their ethics training, and from what I understand, not all of them have completed it? And and if they haven't, why are they serving on the committee?
I'm not exactly sure of the deadline for ethics.
What is, what is it, isn't that what they had it complete by October, whatever date that was?
All right, so may I ask the city council, uh, it's up, it's up to the city council decision, there are a member of um, uh, from the monument committee, it's up to the council. If a member of the city council would like to ask them, it's up to the council.
Yeah, I just want to know what the date, what's that date, was it sometime in October?
They have a year?
Is a year?
So, yeah, so ethics training, we ask them to take it within, than, within thirty days when we onboard them.
Okay.
But legally, legally, Christian can answer.
Legally, it's one year within starting the position, but we can, we can set a shorter timeframe, and then every two years. And then every two years after that.
All right, within a year.
I get it, okay.
In a year.
All right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm done, yes, thank you.
Um, you know, I I, I listen to the public comment, and I'm, I understand I'm not supposed to respond and mention all those stuff, but I've received a lot of letters, email from uh, Mr. Bob Harrison and um, uh, Mr. Gomez. Basically, first of all, I just want to thank you for serving on the commission. Um, I understand it's a, it's a majority Vietnamese-American, but uh, I appreciate your service and um, to me, I mean, you know, if uh, there are no critics, i- it's easy to be dictatorship, so we, we need to check the balances in that uh, committees. I appreciate your service, uh, to serve on the commission, but um, um, I've received your emails, and I read it, and I also, I just want to mention that I, I forward to the interim city manager as well, with the uh, um, you know, the uh, service director, uh, address the issue, okay, those uh, allegations are serious, very serious, and we don't take lightly, and I wish, I I I expect the city to respond to those allegations. If the um, the Kwong Tree Monument, the basically, uh, committee is a, a city committee, and they have to follow all the browse acts, and uh, they have to do everything proper. So I would like to have the city um, official respond to those allegations that you make in your email. My question to the uh, to the city staff is, who call for a meeting from a city uh, committee? Don't we have like agenda for them to meet and discuss, and they have to come up with a solution? Or or they, they can choose when to call the meeting? Uh, how does that work?
Um, the city staff is constantly in contact with the committee members and reminding them about, about a deadline and instruction provided by the city council. So they're working with us on, yes, we can meet on a certain date, and then we keep checking with them, make sure that they have the information to the staff, so we can put it on the agenda, to put it out for, before that meeting.
Okay, and so we have the agenda for the uh, the city committees, right?
Correct.
Okay, and who can cancel the meeting?
The, either the uh, the chair, typically the chairperson is the one who sent it an email requesting to cancel or delay the uh, the meeting.
Okay, can the city deny that cancellation?
I don't think whether we can deny or not, but I mean, the, the reason they were saying that they didn't have enough uh, information, but yes.
Okay, let's just, yeah, so um, as far as, as far as, so let's just go back to the first question about who can call for a meeting. So generally, it's the, it's the chair who is able to call for a meeting, and then you obviously have to have a quorum in order to have that meeting. So as far as what would be on that agenda generally, if it is a committee or commission that does not have a regularly scheduled um, meeting date or time that's established, then ultimately, when they're calling for a meeting, they have an agenda that they want to, you know, to put up. Um, and then, of course, if staff has something, then staff would go and ask, you know, start off with the chair, and say that we, we, you know, we want to have a meeting regarding this, you know, will you, will you accommodate or call for a meeting? And so that's how that gets us. And so that's how that gets established. Not to cancel a meeting. You know, if, if there is a, if there's going to be an anticipated lack of quorum because you're not going to have members show up, that could be grounds for cancellation of a meeting. And the other side of that too is, you know, the chair, um, you know, the, the chair could call for the cancellation. Now, the hard part is, could staff deny a cancellation? That would be awkward. It would definitely be awkward to deny a cancellation of a meeting. Because if you're going to just have the meeting, still, you know, you, you advertise for the meeting out, you notice it, you, you know, you put it out there knowing that there may not be a cancellation, then you're ultimately going to show up. People are going to show up thinking that the meeting is going to happen. And then you've got to cancel it on the spot for a lack of quorum.
See that, um, we have a city council meeting schedule, right? I mean, we have to show up.
Show up. And if you don't show up and I don't have a quorum, then we just, I stick a notice on the door. It says that there's no quorum, we're canceled and everybody has to go home.
Okay, okay, I, I guess, I guess the, my concern is the committee have direct, uh, direction from the city council to reach an agreement and a decision in a, um, with a deadline. But it seems like the, uh, the city committees kind of like do whatever, whatever they want uh, and do not follow the, um, council direction. And I'm really concerned that, uh, we need to fix that. So how do we fix it?
Was there, I'm assuming that there was an agenda posted yet with, with the committee before they canceled?
No, there was not. It was on the calendar, yes, but there was no agenda posted.
Okay. Because I know we've had a, in the planning commission years ago, um, even if, even if we, the agenda was posted and, and we had to show up and if there wasn't a quorum, we had to cancel it at the meeting. For whatever reason, either there wasn't a quorum or, or the applicant wasn't ready, we still had to hold it and then cancel it on this, cancel, make a motion to cancel it or to move it forward or whatever, whatever the action is. But, but what, that's because of the agenda was already posted. So once it's posted, you have to have it, correct? If it wasn't posted, then yeah, they can cancel it, they can.
So.
Why that?
Heartless.
I, I like to have.
Then we need to get it together because I've been on planning commission meetings and we didn't have the applicant, we didn't, we didn't have a quorum, but we still had to show up and, I mean, cancel it at the meeting. So the meeting, my meeting was like literally like a minute long.
Because if the hope was that there would be a quorum, I could see that happening because that's happened before. I've seen that. Where you don't know if everyone's going to show.
Yeah, that's, I think that's probably if you didn't know. Yeah, you're right.
That's interesting planning to begin, but, um, no, but in, in this, this, in this particular case.
How do we fix that?
Ultimately, and, and this is where staff has limitations when it comes to forcing your, you know, your bodies to come and meet. If we, if we don't have a quorum, then we can't get them to show up. With absent, yeah, absent of a schedule, um, for, you know, for a meeting, it's, it's a lot harder to corral, you know, this, a, 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 a group or, you know, a group of, of the members. You know, in this, in this particular case, I, I will say, you know, with, with the quorum and, and I understand where these two are, are struggling because it is a, you know, it is a larger group. But with a, with what is essentially a, a member who is a member of that group who is key to presenting the, the design, that's, that's where they're, that's where they're stuck. They could have had a meeting, but then there was nothing to present. And so that in itself is a problem. So, um, you know, there really is no easy solution for this. You could still have a meeting. You could still have a quorum because based on, you know, eleven members of the committee, if one is absent, you could still have a meeting. But if you don't have the committee providing the information and presenting the information for them to meet and discuss, there really is nothing to discuss. So that's, that's, that's the problem is having, having whatever it is that needs to be presented, ready and presented to staff so it can get put in a staff report, disseminated to the, um, to the committee and so they can meet. And you just hope that the quorum shows up.
If I could just add, the city council, for instance, you, you set days, you're going to meet on the second and fourth Wednesday. So that's in the code and that's set. Planning commission could have that, but it doesn't. But you usually set a time that they're going to meet and that's part of the reason why it's been handled that way in the past. There's a set schedule for when they're meeting. These other committees often don't have that. You certainly have the ability to do that if you think it's, it's necessary. A lot, they do typically need more flexibility, generally speaking. But like in this particular instance, all these committees meet or, or service, uh, the city council, they're recommending to the council. So if you provide direction that you absolutely want them to meet and not to consider, you know, the design committees, you know, the parks and rec in particular, you can, you can instruct that. Now, they could completely ignore you. And then, and then you, they could be removed if you weren't unhappy with the way they're conducting their duties. But I think in this kind of an instance, you just provide as clear direction as possible. Say, we want you to meet before such date, do not consider any other committees. And we need to have this by X date. And I know, it sounds like we already did that, but it sounds like for some reason they didn't get the message or they didn't quite understand it.
Could you relay the message to the committee that we want, uh, want to meet them? Who, we, we want their representative to come here, um, and, uh, present their case to us to explain all, uh, all the allegation that's been going on, okay? During the meeting, who is the one that kind of like advisor to the committee? To tell them what's, uh, what they doing right, what's doing wrong? Who's doing that?
That would be the city staff, either Vanessa or myself.
Okay, so is that a fair statement to, you know, in the past few meetings, everything was, uh, follow, all the procedures was followed correctly? There's no violation in term of, uh, browse acts and all that. Is that a fair statement?
During the meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody speak English?
Yes.
Okay, and, and if, for those member who do not speak English, is there a, a translation? That, uh, someone can translate and, and help them?
No, they actually, all the member expressed that they can speak and understand the English. So they, they did communicate in English.
Uh, was there any time that they asked you to translate?
Uh, no, they didn't request that. We stopped it offer, but they didn't requesting that for that.
Okay, but they, they capable of communicate, right?
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I, I believe this is a community, um, project and I do not want to form an ad hoc committee. Uh, I want that they, they, the, the, the member of the committee, uh, own, have the ownership of this and they have to come up with all this design and, um, agreement and finalize and then present the case to the, uh, city council for final approval. I do not believe that we need to staff an ad hoc committee to get involved with this. So, uh, how, how long do they want the extension? Next meeting, next council meeting?
They want to, Quang Tri would like to meet on May ninth and community services may sixteenth. So that would right before the next meeting.
Okay, right before the next meeting.
The next meeting is May eleventh.
May eleventh.
May eleventh, okay. So we, uh, I can make a motion to extend the deadline to May eleventh. And for some reason, they do not, um, finalize. Uh, I want to talk to the, uh, whoever in charge of that group. Uh, I want them to come here and present to the city council and explain why. Okay, both groups, both committee.
Can we?
Is that fair? Is that, is that okay with the city council?
I think, I think it's fair, um.
The committee, I was not talking about the, you know, the whatever task that the eleven has. It's mainly for the location and mainly because I see trouble with the park and recreation where they're waiting for the fifth person and all sorts of problems. And then they're waiting on the eleven and I don't know why that is so. Did staff communicate that they are to wait for the eleven?
No, 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 it was communicated that their direction was for location recommendation, not to review design aspects.
Hmm, then that's why I made it really clear that they are not to review design aspects. So I don't understand why they're having so much trouble. So it's kind of making me think that they don't want to do that task. And like I said, it should be a privilege to be making such decision. And so that's the part I said to, you know, to, uh, have an ad hoc on. Because, uh, the other, I mean, I, I, I'm, I think, you know, if we extend it to the eleven and that's that, you know, then I'm fine with that.
Are they requesting the eleven? Is that the date they're requesting?
They're requesting to meet on May nine.
May nine?
Yes.
The, the commissioner, the, or, or the committee?
The committee of eleven. No, the other one is the sixteen.
Correct. Quang Tri Monument Committee is requesting May ninth to ho, to hold their next meeting. And community services then responded to meet May sixteenth.
Can we call? After the Quang Tri Monument Committee?
Absolutely, I can, I can.
Can we call it? And, and, and you know what? If, if they don't make, do not make a decision or finalize, I seriously consider an ad hoc committee.
I'm telling you that they are, I think they are waiting and what I, what you stated earlier that they're waiting on the Quang Tri for something. So they want their meeting to be the sixteenth. So can you please, um, I'm, is the eleventh our meeting, our council meeting?
The council meeting is on the eleventh.
Okay, so that's why I heard the eleventh. Okay. So everything, I would, I would consider an extension if everything is to be presented on the eleventh. If not, then I'm, we're going to say this for sure is that the ad hoc committee for the, for the park and rec, to replace the park and rec. If that is agreeable with everybody, then I'm going to, I'm going to extend.
Can I say, I kept waiting, sorry, council member, uh, when? First, uh, when we agreed to this way, I think it was, would you say March ninth? We agreed that, that, uh, once we gave them these dates, which, that we, that they could request extensions. So we agreed on that back in that day, that meeting, but now we're not liking that. So we all had, we all had agreed that that's, that they could request an extension.
But the, the only thing is the reason why they're requesting the extension is the problem is that one is, is the park and recreation is waiting on the other.
We, we, we didn't say that.
We did identify that.
There was, uh, we didn't say, well, they can request an extension if, if X, Y, and Z, you know, we didn't say that.
They did not follow instructions. The last, at the last meeting when we extended, uh, we said that they are to do their own thing. They are to do their own thing and, and, you know, that, that would be the, that what they, that's what they were tasked with. So, and their own thing would be to make a decision on the location.
I, I, so did, um, council member, do you make a motion for the eleven?
So if, so.
Because, I, I mean, yeah.
I, I make a motion to, um, may I ask? Stand them to the eleven, uh, city council meeting. If they unable to meet the deadline, I would like to, uh, have their representative of two, the two committee to come before the city council and, and, and explain to us, um, why they couldn't do their job.
Can I have my input?
And I'm, I'm seriously consider forming an ad hoc committee if they, uh, not willing to do it, so.
So it's, so the deadline to put anything on the agenda for the eleventh is technically tomorrow? So if they're supposed to make a decision by the ninth, it's a little bit late to get it on the eleventh agenda? We can generate a report for it?
Well, it sounds like this.
Are you the city manager now or is it city clerk?
Can I talk now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Additional details.
I, I just want, I just want to follow, but, uh, you'll come back to.
And you're right, yeah.
I just want to come back what the mayor said earlier that, um, and, and I want, I want the city attorney confirm that. I have seen before that, um, uh, if we have a question and we, we, we do have the committee members sitting in the, you know, at the meeting, we can call them and ask question, right? What I see is right now that the committee members here, that they, he wants, he really wants to address the council. So with, if we as a council allow that, I'd like to invite the, me to, Gomez, your name? Can, can you come forward and, and present your case?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, uh, thank you for allowing me to come up here. There's some clarifications that I'd like to make. We keep talking about eleven committee members. There's thirteen to alternates. When the committee was selected, I, I don't know how it was selected, but there was ten Vietnamese and Bob was the only American. I was an alternate. And there was a fellow Vietnamese who was with me. So there was thirteen. What happened was here and there, I got to, to be on the committee because of absenteeism. We still had a quorum, we still had a chair, co-chair, everything else. The one of the problems that I mentioned earlier, their lack of knowledge of English. I disagree with you. Because I've been with them, I've argued with them. If you cared to review the video, and I believe it's December twenty-first of last year, you will see where I'm sitting at that chair and I am constantly bombarding them with no, no, no. There was a particular, a vote to where the Brown Act was broken so badly. Let's say this gentleman there, he voted, everybody voted yes, but you. And you voted the opposite. Two of the Vietnamese went to him and said, no, no, change your vote, change your vote. And he changed his vote. This thing about when the Brown Act was supposed to be completed through the communications that we got was to be done by October twenty-fourth. That was on a Sunday and that was when we were supposed to be sworn in. And we were, we were sworn in. And they, you know, and I, like I said, in the packets that I've given you, you can see it took me almost four hours because it was not easy reading. I was a store director for Ralph's Grocery Company and you had to deal with employees. I've had as many as eighty-four and as many as a hundred and seventy-five. And you have to understand their talents. One thing that I really noticed is that, first of all, the chair wasn't the chair. Oh, he was chair by name. But the co-chair Kenny, he was the one who was running it. He and I got in a couple of altercations verbal. They had, and on that same day, I just asked Bob, that's the day that they voted the monument was complete. The design. Think of the monument back there, American flag on the left-hand side, but the symbols in the front. On the right-hand side, Vietnamese flag and the symbols of the Vietnamese military on the right. I've got the drawing, they still have the original ones where we're doing all that. It's not because absenteeism or some computer or something like that. They have chosen to delay it. And I'll be very frank with you, in that video, I said, you never wanted any Americans on this, on this committee. You set us up a failure. And what can I not tell you? That because of American air power and the Vietnamese dying and fighting as hard as they could, it was a combination of a team that won the Quang Tri victory. That's what it was. But the same, I think Kenny is old school in thinking like Nixon and President Trump at the time.
Excuse me, I don't, I don't, I don't want to stop you, but, uh, I would like for you to wrap it up and, and, and tell your concern that, that you have.
Okay. We received a letter from the city attorney on twelve twenty-one. And one of the comments you made that said, I am aware, I've been made aware of, uh, errors that are going on with your meeting. And you said. And you said, get on your computers ASAP or to get them done now, that night. Why, how come we have committee members that don't even know what the Brown Act is? So a lot of what I'm hearing is nothing but nonsense. And I can't believe that they're coming up. And though two people.
Mr. Gomez, can I ask you a question?
I have not received any emails from the chair or the co-chair.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Okay, you obviously very upset right now, I can see that. So you, you make comments about member committees and you, what I'm hearing is they unable to communicate in English well enough. So does that mean that they don't have the intelligence to, um, make a decision? Is, is, and you're a president, man? Okay?
I'm Mexican. And, you know, uh, you know, it, it's hard for me too, just like it is for you as Asians as a Mexican in Southern California sometimes. Go back across the border, things like that, I've been told. You know, I'm Caucasian. So I know what to go for, you know? Asian hate was just recently just exploded last year. I know how it is when they show that picture of Mexicans go to that door or we don't. My mother told me about issues that happened in San Diego. Where they have to walk back, but the West want to get into restaurant. And my father sometimes did not allow, and I would have fit in there in front door because she was so Caucasian. So yes, I am upset. You guys all are. On cynical BS that I keep hearing.
Mr. Gomez, uh, I, I understand what you're saying. But you make a comment that we set you up for failure. What do you mean by that?
Well, first of all, I can tell you a love sided myth. Ten Vietnamese and one American. What impact did that one American have?
What, did you, you happen to hear that, uh, did you follow the council meeting where we appointing member of the Quang Tri Monument Committee? Did, did you follow it or you, you didn't?
What do you mean, did I follow it?
Okay, when we have a city council meeting several months ago, sometime last year, that we appointing members of the Quang Tri Monument Committee, did you follow it, uh, live in person or you never watch it?
No, because on 12/21, we, Bob and I were told, and there was a vote, that everything was complete.
So you did not, is that, the, the answer is no, right?
We saw it.
Mr. Gomez, the, so the answer is, so my question is no, you did not watch the city council meeting?
No, 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 I did not because I was disgusted, so, so disgusted because I was getting no emails from the chair or the co-chair. The only emails I was getting was from the city, city manager, hey, there's a meeting here, dah, dah, dah. That's all.
Okay. I guess my question is, my question was that when we appointed you into the committee, that, that took several meeting, I, I, I think, but had, did you actually listen to the council meeting that appointing members of the Quang Tri Monument Committee? Did you have the chance to did it? Did you, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So you understand why we appointed you, me, propose that you, to appoint a member of the American veteran into the committee, is that correct? Did you?
Right. Uh, it was difficult to help guide the committee because the committee had closed the door on us, on Bob and my, and the, and myself. It was their way or the highway. That's simple.
And that is the key, that's the reason why we set you up for failure, is that what you're saying? Okay. Well, I like to, uh, like, I, I think I mentioned it's, uh, before, the reason I would like to have an American, uh, veterans, uh, to be appointed to committee so that we can, um, help with, uh, critics, uh, just, just, just a balance, check and balances. And, and, and again, it's a democratic process. I mean, you know, if, if I say that, it's gonna upset a lot of people, but it's a democratic process, uh, the, you know, I understand it's tough, it's difficult. And I, again, I appreciate your, your service in the committee, you and Bob Harrison, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But, but at the same time, uh, we, we, it is a difficult task. Obviously, communication is a huge problem. But at the same time, we need to, um, the, the city staff, when the city attorney, we need to address the issue that brought up by Goldman, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Harrison to make sure that the member committee really followed the rule and procedure for city meeting, uh, by the letter. If they outline, we need to address the issue, we need to address the issue immediately. And if you need the city council to remove those member who intentionally broke, break the rules, uh, please put it on the agenda, I'd be happy to make a motion to remove them immediately.
Attorney sent that same type of letter on 12/21 and it was read before the committee.
Okay. Uh, and, 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 and one more thing I want to address is, uh, Mr. Gomez, most member of the Quang Tri Monument, uh, they never have a chance to serve on, I, I'm not saying, I'm not protecting them, I'm not science with them, I, I, I never actively involved with that process because it's not my, my monument, uh, it's a community monument. This is the first time to, um, participate in a democratic process of serving in a committee. Okay, so Brown's Act and all those policy and procedures, it's, it's foreign to them. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm really glad that they have a chance to do it, it's a, it's a learning curve. Maybe what you're saying initially, early in onset, probably true. But then, uh, you know, I think that, uh, as we go along, they learn that they're not supposed to do that. And then, and, and I, I'm, I'm asking the city staff to make sure that's happened. If anybody got, get out of line, please put it on the agenda and I'd be happy to remove them, okay? And, and put someone else in there, so.
Uh, my, uh, my response to that is, I think that's a great idea. But with committee meets, and you might have one of the city staffers, you know, uh, I've seen when the city staffers have repeatedly looked at the committee and said, look, English only. I've seen them correct them. And they did not heed the word.
Hmm. So, so what did, what did the staff do?
Yeah, what they do.
They would tell English only.
What did they do? How did they respond to it?
They wouldn't respond. Many times, they just don't respond. And then they'd be doing good, uh, for a short period of time in English, then you could hear the, uh, let's, let's, you two would be speaking in Vietnamese up there, you know? And it wasn't all inclusive. As far as I know, everything was completed on 12/21. Look at that video.
Okay, okay. I have to bring this up, you mentioned it earlier. You, you, it sounds like, uh, the Quang Tri battle was won, uh, not because of the effort of the South Vietnam Armed Forces. And, 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 uh, you know, I, I give, you know, you, you, you were saying it and, and you were upsetting, I, I gave me the impressions that you were saying that, uh, the South Vietnam Armed Forces was a coward. Is that the, is any true to that?
Uh, no. Uh, what it was, was those South Vietnamese Marines, uh, paratroopers, they all suffered. I commend their heroism. They are my brothers. We fought together. We put people, we put each other in body bags. I was there during Tet of 1968 and I landed up in Dunha. And I had, I do have a combat commendation medal.
I were one years old and I appreciate your service, sir.
So, you know, it was not that. It was that the co-chair refused to accept the fact that with combination, with combination of the use of air power that we had, the United States, all combat units had been taken out of Vietnam by 72. There were advisors, yes, some air bases, yes. So combination of B-52 bomber, uh, bombing runs, tactical, they were hitting them in the rear. We had over 2,000, I have the numbers at home and I actually had, had pointed out and read it to, to the committee, or 2,000 some number of B-52, a B-52 carries, what is it? 102 500 pound bomb. That's one B-52. Can you imagine what, uh, over 2,000 bombing runs? And they were coming in from Guam and from Thailand. We had over 5,000 tactical sorties, with the tactical sorties. That's when the jets come down and the, and, and the army or the Marines, they were like being held back because North Vietnamese had three months to prepare Quang Tri or the anticipated attack. When they couldn't move in, guess what? And then I know there was a little bit, uh, where I got into an argument with the, with the co-chair, he accused the United States Air Force of, of dropping some bombs on, and killing some Vietnamese. Well, in the book that I gave you, it basically says, for the first time, they used a laser guided bomb, a US air jet, went and blew up a wall in the city of. And the Vietnamese soldiers were able, South Vietnamese soldiers were able to go in. The trouble was with a two South Vietnamese aircraft came in behind them and dropped 500 pound bombs and killed, oh, what was it? Over 100 wounded and close to 50 dead. That stopped the initiative. You know, even President Two, Two did not want the US Air Force to help, but he had no choice. Because the Vietnamese Air Force had planes, they didn't have air power. There's a huge difference. So I commend the men on the ground who took it the way that I read a lot. And I had a post on my Facebook about a picture I left in March of 67, a picture with my, uh, mother. And he wrote in the very bottom, thank you for your service, we did a wonderful job. But at the end of the day, we lost the war. And, 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 yeah, it's on my Facebook. And it's five Vietnamese gentlemen.
I, I really appreciate your explanations, uh, you know, and initially it sounds like you, uh, us versus them, um, and it's just really easy to cause misunderstanding. The committee is supposed to work together, yes, we have disagreement, but I, it doesn't have to be us versus them, so I appreciate that, sir.
I have a few things to say.
We long-winded.
No, thank you.
No, no, you have another question, right?
Oh, yeah, thank you for your service and thank you for, um, serving the committee. I know it's been difficult. But, um, you know, one of the reasons that I thought this was important is that, one, and this is what it was spoken about way back when, many moons ago, with, with the original monument, when it was first proposed, that, you know, there were so many, um, like you yourself and Mr. Harrison and then all the, you know, all the, uh, the veterans, the Vietnamese veterans, I've spoken to a lot of them, that, that hurt and, and the pain is still there to this day, you know? I don't have to tell you. And, and when you speak to veterans, you can't help but get emotional. I got emotional. And, and this is important, it is important here in the city of Westminster because of the, is the population that we have. And, and, and getting this monument, this monument is important to the community. It may not be important to some, but it is important to others. But the thing is that we need to get this monument right. And that's what's spoken about, but by some residents and it was spoken about by coun- council, that the history, it needs to be correct. If the history is not correct, you're dis- we're disrespecting the, 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 the men who, who gave their life to this cause and those who are still with us, they're still suffering today because of the experience of, uh, the ugliness of war. So we need to get the history correct. That was the whole reason that, that, at least for myself, that why I voted the way I voted was to give the community the opportunity to get this right and to be heard, to the voices of all those who this is so important to, to be heard. But it sounds to me that, that unfortunately, you know, a- as council member Doe explained, there was parameters of how the committee members were chosen and why they were chosen. And to me, I was hoping that, that, that the passion was so there, so strong and, and the sentiment and, and, and the hurt in their hearts were so strong that their, every effort to get it right was gonna happen. And it appears that, that it's not, at least that's what it looks like from, from what I'm keep hearing, that, that it's, there's a lot of things that are being done wrong and the history is not correct. And there's people and organizations who are being excluded. And that's not what this is about. This is about getting it right for all those who, who, who paid the ultimate price and, and, and this is just turned into a very ugly situation, it's totally dividing our city more than it already is. And we can't have that. This needs to be done right and the history needs to be done right and the, and the, the, all the groups that there were, that were participated and helped, if, if this gonna, needs to be honored correctly. It's not about, uh, I have the votes and you don't have the votes and I'm gonna get this, um, emblem on there because, because I have the votes. That's not what it's about. This city of Westminster has a, a very strong passion for the, the, the experience of war, the refugee, all the Vietnamese refugees that came here, it's very important. We're right in the middle of Black April, we're gonna celebrate Black April here on Saturday. And, and we're, this is where we're here arguing that because I have the war, the votes, I'm gonna do this. No, that's not what it's about. Now, this whole thing, it totally, it's completely, I mean, it's just been a nightmare, really. And it's been a nightmare to a lot of, a lot of residents here in the city. And that's not what this is about. And, and it's not about getting your way and I wanna hurry up and get it done, that's not what it's about. So whatever needs to be, there's so many things, I don't even know which way to go now to fix this, I don't even know if it's fixable. I don't know, so I'm just kind of very, right now, I feel for you, I feel for, for, all the American, uh, Vietnam veterans, I feel for all the Vietnamese Vietnam veterans who, who I've spoken to a lot and, and it's very, like I said, the pain is still there, you're still living with. I, I've met walking, uh, precincts knocking on doors, I've seen veterans, uh, one gentleman that's in my district, he's, he, uh, he's very, he has a, he lost his hand, he's got a lot of injuries. And when you speak to him, you, I mean, it's very emotional, it's very emotional to speak to somebody like that. And this whole monument and everything that's been happening, it's, 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 like I said, it's a nightmare and it, and it needs to be done right. The history needs to be done right, all, every, the members who, who, the, the battalions, everybody that, that participated needs to be honored correctly. And the, the, the verbiage that, that needs to, that's supposedly gonna be put on there needs to be correct. The facts, the history needs to be correct. And I don't even know where to go with this because it sounds to me that, that, that the committee has lost track of what is right.
I.
And, 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 and that cannot happen, we need to, it needs to, so, I don't know what, I, I don't even have the, the answers for you right now, but, um, and something needs to change and they need to redirect their, their, uh, what's important to, what is important here? You need to find it and get it right. So for now.
One last comment.
Go ahead.
And then it'll be quick. On March 29th of 2017, President, the former President Trump, uh, announced that it was welcome home, uh, welcome home Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day. I don't know if you're aware of that. They had huge parades in Hawaii. The Vietnamese people were out there with the Vietnam veterans, hugging and kissing and having a great old time. We talk old stories about what we went through with our fellow brothers on Sundays, on the first salute Sundays, because we can talk to them, they can talk to us. It's just like talking to a psychiatrist. It is, it is a wonderful feeling to go to Freedom Park. It really is. And it's helped many, many veterans from Chapter 1024 and Chapter 1624. And it's helped many, many veterans from Chapter ten twenty-four and Chapter seven five six. And we have members coming in from Santa Barbara, Las Vegas, Tennessee for Saturday's event. Because that's how we feel. And I know that maybe some of you do not are aware of March twenty-ninth because it's not on a public calendar. But on the military calendars, it is. And you can Google it. President Obama started it, and I believe in two thousand twelve. But each state would do a recognition day. President Trump in two thousand seventeen said it was a national holiday. And I told the rest of the guys, they said, "No, no, it's not a national holiday." I go, "Yeah, it is. Google it, man." And guess what? It is. So maybe we can think of something together for next year.
You can recognize it here and put it on our agenda to.
Yes.
You think, Mayor?
Yes, I, yes, I agree with that. And I think that we are really sorry that we are not, we're not aware of that recognition. But I still remember, I think, seven or eight years ago, when there was a feature movie, Ride of Thunder. I remember you.
Yes.
I remember Mr. Harrison, Gomez and other Vietnam vet arm-in-arm with a lot of South Vietnamese veterans. And that was a really beautiful moment. I was there. I was there to speak at the beginning of the opening of the movie, Ride of Thunder. I still remember that and I really appreciate that moment. And I think that there was a lot of moments I was at Freedom Park. I participate in your event. So, right now, I have a question for both of you. For the last five months, how many meeting that the Monument Committee have? And my second question, is there a solution? Is there an opportunity for all the members to sit down to work together?
I believe there's still, you won't be able to get the timeline. Because what happened was when we were told that we had a rendition, we had some, a couple of Vietnamese, Vietnamese gentlemen who brought in some artwork and this and that, what they thought was this and that. And I said, "That one cannot be that way because they had the South Vietnamese flag on the highest point and the US flag was on the bottom point and on the right side instead of the left side." So I, I get it. So anyway, we corrected that. And the gentleman later said, "If I would have known, I would not have put the flags that way." They would have been parallel. Because we don't want the US flag to dominate over the South Vietnamese flag either. You know, we want the US flag on the left, Vietnamese flag on the right. And that's the way it is. And he was so apologetic. But yet, the committee didn't even look at him. They didn't even know that there was two gentlemen out here that were showing their stuff. They had their own agenda. And that's what I've said from the very beginning and I have been very vocal about it. And, and like I say, and thank you so much for, and I know it's like, and I do thank you for the opportunity. And I did not really want to come up here and say some of the things I said. But there gets to be a time where enough is enough. You must know what's going on. And I think that somehow, if maybe some from us, from you can help guide them. I'm not telling them what to do or this or that. But to make them really understand that it is all of us together, that we are to make choices. It's not supposed to be a nine or ten to one vote.
Well, sometimes, yeah.
It's a fixed game.
What I want to say, and I failed to mention earlier in my comments, was that, you know, being in a committee, a lot of, including yourselves, I don't know if you've ever been in a committee in a city, but a lot of them, it's a really, I mean, it's a really proud thing and a really honorable thing to do, you know, there's excitement there for sure. To be able to be part of something like this, a committee that's, you know, representing the city. And there's also a learning curve for sure, you know, take it from somebody, you know, when you're first, when you're first, you know, first start, there is a learning curve. You know, so, and it is excitement, yeah, something to be proud of. You know, but unfortunately, I think they kind of lost their way, but, so there is, I'm not making excuses for them, but there is an excitement there. And there is, you know, so you're going to have a learning curve as far as, you know, you know, the Brown Act, you know, how do you hold the meeting? How do you, who makes a motion, who, you know, say, all that, there's a learning curve for sure, all that. So, I wouldn't put too much weight on, on that. But for sure, you know, there can be, you know, meetings held outside of public. That's, you know, to violate Brown Act. But as far as in the meeting, learning how our meeting is run, that's, there is going to be mistakes made. You know, so, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that. But like I said earlier, I think it's just, for me, I was hoping that there was so much respect there and honor to get it right, that everybody was going to come together and make sure that everything that was proposed was done right. And the correct history was being represented, everything. But it is imperative that that's what's happening and I don't know. That's, go ahead.
All of you, there is that book that I said, Vietnam, read the part about the Quang Tri battle. It talks about the officers, it talks about the units and all that. That magazine's been around for about twenty-five years. And they are excellent about their historical events.
Well, that's something that I hope that maybe they can be brought up during the meeting to make sure that this is, that the facts are correct. And so if we need to extend this, the important thing is to get it right. If it takes longer, it takes longer, in my book. Mayor?
Thank you.
Just real quickly, we're past midnight. We're supposed to take a vote if we're going to go past midnight. Yeah. Just wanted to point that out.
All right. So I already make a motion to extend this to
To what?
Eleven, but that will be
Yeah, we need to figure out.
Not enough time, right? We can push this to the next meeting? And it has to be done and we need to talk to the representative of the two committee. If they cannot, for some reason, they unable to do their job, we need to come before us and tell us why. Without violating any.
So then we need to figure out when, what they, we need to tell them what they can have the meeting.
So if you're, if you're looking, if you're looking for them to come back on the eleventh, then they would need to meet a lot earlier, like next week.
Okay.
In order to meet, you know, to meet the deadline, to get a report out and everything by the, you know, for the eleventh meeting. Otherwise, if you're going to honor what, you know, their extension request, which would be the eleventh and sixteenth, that would be enough time for the May twenty-fifth meeting. But then again, that would be pushing it out a month.
I believe that we should give them those, that time because they're not, they're not going to, they're not ready now, they're not going to be ready in a week. So we need to.
Basically, I want to understand the motion from Councilmember Do. You only, you only want, like, only a person from a committee, it's not the whole group. Am I correct? It's not a whole committee, am I correct?
I say the representative of that group without violating the Brown Act. So, whatever that means to the city staff, so. Have them to come for us and answer questions, so. All right.
But the meeting, the date that they, for the extension, we, they need to be further out. Because they're not going to be ready for, to have a meeting sooner, next week?
Let's push for next week and let's see what happens. Well, you know, we talk about it, we talk about the, for a meeting on March because we, we don't give any timeline and people are going to push it off. We need to, we need to push the envelope. We need to make sure that they perform. If they can't perform, we want them to come in front of us and answer the questions, why?
I think, so they're requesting, Vanessa, they're requesting the sixteenth and the eleventh?
The eleventh.
The eleventh or sixteen?
The ninth.
The ninth.
Quang Tri Monument Committee and May sixteenth for Community Services and Recreation Commission.
So I think that's what they're requesting, but we can't, staff, we won't think, we won't have things ready for them, right? Their agenda, we need to do it.
On these dates, neither will be ready for the May eleventh council meeting.
I'm going to go May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
With these dates, as long as they have something to present to council.
If, if the committees, if the committees meet and make a recommendation on May ninth and the sixteenth, like they said they are planning and asking for the extension, then there's enough time for staff to prepare the staff report and to get it out to council from May twenty-fifth council meeting.
I want to make sure, I, I want to make sure that these folks in the Park and Recreation understand once again is that they are not to wait for the other. It's not, we're not asking them to wait for the outcome of the Quang Tri Committee.
I will reiterate.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. I want them to act independently. I agree with the councilwoman.
Yeah, I don't understand where is the misunderstanding. We made it really clear last time. So I think they should, if we're going to extend maybe, you know, the week of the ninth. So they, I don't, I don't want them to think that they're going to wait for the result of the ninth meeting for the QT Committee, for them to meet on the sixteenth. So if we're going to extend, let's just make it all on the week of the ninth.
So the Quang Tri Committee on the ninth.
Or the Park and Recreation as well.
Sixteen.
And then have those results ready for staff for the meeting.
I think the council needs to focus on the deadline that we'd like to, to have our meeting. But whatever the city staff have to do with the committee to make things happen, then it's up to the city staff, so.
Yeah, but I just don't want them to think that having it on the sixteenth, the way they were thinking, that they're waiting for the QT Committee to have their results on the ninth. That's why they're having it on the sixteenth.
Understood.
Okay.
So we, we have a motion and second on the floor then?
For the, for the, May fifth, May, May ninth for the QTC.
May ninth?
Yeah, May ninth, May ninth for the QTC Committee.
Committee, Committee Commission?
May sixteen.
May sixteen, okay. So we go to discuss on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
That's, that's what staff needs, right?
But it's, so there will be item on agenda on the twenty-fifth of our meeting, am I correct? Okay.
Based on the discussion, there will be an item with either what they decided or someone coming in telling you.
All right, okay. So we have a motion and second on the floor. Go please.
I'll make the second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Councilmember Do, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo to extend to May eleventh and include on the agenda if, I'm sorry, May twenty, I'm sorry, May twenty-five, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, May twenty-fifth. And to, hold on, I'm sorry.
On May twenty-fifth, we will have a breakfast center too from the Monument Committee and the Park Commission, am I correct?
Okay, so, so the motion that I got was that you are granting the extension for the Monument Committee to, for their deadline of May ninth for the Community Services and Recreation Commission for their deadline of May sixteenth. And that an item will be presented to the city council with either their recommendations or a representative from either of the committees to show up on the twenty-fifth regardless.
Right. But to also tell the committee that they should not consider anything from the Monuments Committee to make their decision. They need to make the decision with what they have right now.
Right.
All right, so we have a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Do? Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Tong?
Yes, so. Lastly, I have a comment from City Council Agency Member, including AB one, two, three, four, report when reply. Anyone want to speak anything?
I'm making a comment. Thank you, Mayor. First, I thank you, Council Mayor, for tonight, hard work. And all your hard work at Chos Seon as well. Thank you for all the residents who stuck with us through this meeting. Thank you to all staff for all your hard work as well. I know you guys are really dedicated and I appreciate it. I want to thank also to our police chief. He was, had a busy night tonight. So we put him to work today, so that's good. Thank you, Chief. I just want to kind of agendize one of the topics that came up tonight was far as the agenda is the public comment policy and bring that back until we, you know, get it right and make sure that we don't have this issue again. All right?
So do we want to just start off with looking at what the current policy is and we'll go from there?
Yeah, just look at what it is and then go from there. So, and that's all I got, is I want to thank you everybody. Thank you.
Next?
I go next. I thank you for the reminder, I forgot the name of the person who reminded us that April twenty-fourth through the thirtieth is, was established by Ronald Reagan. I kind of looked it up and it's a National Crime Victims Rights Week. And thank you for informing us. We will remember for next year. I just want to say a little bit about that. The US Attorney's Office recognized the importance of not only finding justice for crime victims in the courtroom, but enforcing victims' rights and providing victims with access to the resources and services that can help them heal. That is very good to note that it was established by Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-one. So remember, April twenty-fourth through thirtieth. Thank you very much for reminding us. For me, I think it's important for us to work together. I thank you, the two gentlemen, for coming and staying all the, you know, way until the end to share with us your thoughts and your frustrations. I could feel that. And I, I think it's important that we try to work together and move forward. And I think it's where our meetings are getting shorter and shorter. So that's really a good sign of us doing better. So I thank you, staff. I thank you, chief. And I really don't have anything else to report. Thank you so much. Good night.
All right, so, next?
I just want to remind everyone that this coming Saturday at ten o'clock at Freedom Park, there were city organized Black April event. So I would like to invite everyone to come out. All right, that's all I have today.
Yes, well, thank you. I just want to shout out to Officer Montgomery for the ten eighth, one ten. What is it now, like three arrests and sixteen, fifteen recover or something like that, right? To get the pin? Thirty, thirty-seven? That's his total or is that a requirement right now by the chippy? His total, thirty-seven, okay, that's a high achievement. Okay, well, congratulations for me, please. And, you know, what, we, we have a participate in a Westminster Chamber, Chamber for Luncheon yesterday, Atlanta Kitchen, and that was my first event after two years in COVID. I mean, the last one that I attend, the Westminster Chamber Commerce Luncheon, Monday Luncheon, was like two years ago. So it was good to see some familiar faces and some new ones, so it was great. It's just the interim city manager and the ACM was there and the chief was there and one of the detectives. So that was a good time. That was a great event and we're looking forward to the next luncheon. That, I don't know where yet, but it's always good. So, anyway, it's going to be April thirtieth coming up this Saturday. And you know what, every time Black April is on, we bring back a lot of memory for me. You know, I remember the war when it's ended, I was seven, eight years old. Remember the T-54 Russian tank rolling to the city of Biennium, you know? I remember the track, it's like to tear up the street. And it's just a lot of emotion for me for Black April. April thirtieth, that's when, you know, the whole country turned upside down, all free enterprise was shut down. Anyone who Anyone who have tied with the Vietnamese South Vietnam military was sent to prison. The government was sent to prison, their property confiscated. People were pushed to the the Highland and the forest to they have to do their own thing to survive. So it's a lot of suffering. My my family is no exception. We have to, first time I have to go back to my mother's farmlands, you know, where and and I know what it's like to be on the rice paddy, huh? And the sugar cane field and cultivating things. So and 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 that's why I'm here, you know? Three day in the ocean, the boat sink. So it's 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 given me the reflection that I have nothing but gratitude to the the people of this country who accept, who welcomed me with open arms, giving an opportunity and have an education, have a family, raise a raise two good kids and being a police officer twenty five years, get elected, serpent discount. So there's some crazy time, but you know what? I'm looking back and enjoying it. Uh, I I have nothing but gratitude and it just it's it's difficult to people, but to me, it's it's an experience. It's what I and have nothing but gratitude. So looking forward to the April thirtieth event this Saturday, this weekend. So again, thank you very much. Thank you all the police officer, you know, and they're not us. There's not a police officer that doesn't feel that they they know how to protect the public. It's in their hearts and and I I I do that every day and I just want to extend a shout out to the chief and send my best regard to our police officer. So thank you very much.
All right. I want to thanks everyone for being really patient. I want to thanks a member from the committee for patient, for your patience, for for staying until the end. For myself, I was only a few years old when the war ended. However, I I was stuck in the country until nineteen ninety two. So I left Vietnam on April thirtieth nineteen ninety two. So I came here, went to school. I I got a degree and I involved with the community. So I think that all of the Vietnamese American, we all have experience with the war, I want to thanks all the Vietnam veterans for their sacrifice. I want to thanks all the South Vietnamese soldier for their sacrifice too. Yes, I was stuck in the country until nineteen ninety two. So my father, he was imprisoned by the communist government for many years. So I did have a lot of experience at a time, the country, wow. That's a really kind of story. So I think we all wear that hundred thousand of Vietnamese tried to escape a country after the fall of Saigon and a lot of them did couldn't make it. Yeah. So our city really want to thanks our city staff, our police officer, our firefighters, you know, being really supportive for our community. So we have the Black April commemoration and I'd like to invite all member of the community come to join us and to celebrate with us. Really appreciate that. So that's the meeting tonight. So our 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 next meeting will be on Wednesday, May eleven, twenty twenty two at seven PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.